This September 23rd, 2021, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Herndon High School Chamber Orchestra, under the direction of Allison Deveraux. Thank you, Herndon. That was wonderful. Agenda item 2.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia...
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. It is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 23rd, 2021, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed motion. Closed meeting. Is there a motion? Move, my Ms. Corbett Sanders. Seconded, my Ms. Omech. All those in favor. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Seismor Heizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. That motion passes. Agenda item 2.03, Announcements. If you would like to review a copy of this agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. A reminder, masks must be worn by everyone in attendance this evening. Pranav Shodri, our student representative, is also absent this evening. Item 5.02, Recommended Changes to the Strategic Governance Manual Regarding the Process for Bringing Additional Recognitions and Resolutions has been removed from tonight's agenda at the request of a Board Member. And I would also like to remind everyone that when school board members go to the back of the room, there is a TV available, and they are able to follow what is happening during the school board meeting. Agenda item 2.04, Recognition of Whitman Middle School's 60th Anniversary. I call Ms. Corbett Sanders for the recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I am so thrilled to be able to make this recognition because I attended Walt Whitman Middle School when I was in eighth grade. Not quite 60 years ago, though. Walt Whitman Middle School proudly celebrates 60 years of educating and nurturing the children of Mount Vernon. It opened on September 5th, 1961, with an enrollment of 1,066 students at the site of the old Mount Vernon Road that is now Mount Vernon High School. In 1973, it was decided that the original location would be better suited for Mount Vernon High School, so Whitman traded places with the high school, moving to Richmond Highway Location, which is now known as the original Mount Vernon High School. With the closing of Fort Hunt High and the merger of Stephen Foster and Bryant Intermediate Schools in 1985, Whitman was moved again to its present location on Sherwood Hall Lane. When it opened, Whitman was one of the first original 11 intermediate schools in Fairfax County Public Schools. Intermediate schools were created to ease the transition from elementary school to high school by providing students with a specialized program of study geared to the specific needs of their age group. In the 1990s, intermediate schools were renamed as middle schools to better reflect a focus on nurturing student growth academically, socially, and personally. Whitman Middle School's mission calls for collective responsibility and collaboration with peers, parents, and community members to create a positive, respectful culture that sets high expectations, achievable goals, and a pathway to success for all students. Whitman Middle School's dedicated teachers inspire students to discover and pursue opportunities as they become innovative and productive global citizens. The staff and administration of Whitman share the belief that all students can learn and that diversity is a strength in creating a resilient, open-minded community of learners. The school has implemented many innovative programs, practices, and strategies to address the school's changing demographics and students with special needs. Whitman is an international baccalaureate middle-years program and supports a thriving, avid program, and in 2018, Whitman became FCPS's first community school. The program's goal is to leverage community resources, combining them with an integrated focus on academics, health, and social services, youth, and community development, and community engagement to lead to improved student learning, stronger families, and overall healthier And I would like to just let everybody know that I share the responsibility for Walt Whitman Middle School with Ms. Darnak Kofax, and I cannot imagine a better partner on the highway to ensure that Walt Whitman gets the support that is necessary and appropriate for the world-class school that it is. So I would like to welcome Whitman Middle School Principal Craig Herring, Whitman Middle School staff, and anyone else who is here in support of the recognition to please join both Ms. Darnak Kofax and I at the dais for a photo with the Board.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, I do see that we have a former school board member in attendance, Ms. Elizabeth Schultz, and I want to recognize her this evening. Thank you for joining us. Agenda item 2.05, Resolution Honoring Charlie Hooky. Call Ms. McLaughlin for the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Pikarski. This evening, I am extremely honored to read a resolution honoring Charles Hooky, who is a longtime member of the FPAC, the Facilities and Planning Advisory Committee that advises the Fairfax County School Board. Whereas Mr. Charles Hooky has served on the Fairfax County School Board Facilities Planning Advisory Council with dedication for 10 years, and for the last eight years as its council secretary, and whereas thoughtfulness and envisioning have been instrumental in fulfilling the Facility's Planning Advisory Council mission to provide accurate, timely, and relevant advice to the Fairfax County School Board for the development of strategic, comprehensive, and long-term plans for educational support facilities, and whereas Mr. Hooky's leadership on the Long Range Planning Subcommittee has immeasurably helped Fairfax County Public Schools plan for new and renovated facilities, boundary adjustments, and emergency preparedness, and whereas Mr. Hooky developed a Facility's Planning Advisory Council orientation for new members and graciously hosted the new member orientation with his signature chocolate chip cookies, and whereas the success of the Facility's Planning Advisory Council can in part be tied to something that Mr. Hooky had advocated for. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Mr. Charles Hooky and thanks him for his outstanding service and dedication to the Fairfax County School Board, its students, families, and community members. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Cohen. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your resolution?
I would. As many of us who've lived in Fairfax County for a very long time, we know that one of the most amazing treasures we have in this county is our residents, who bring a wealth of expertise and their willingness to serve and help strengthen and improve our community. And I can't think of a better resident, citizen, and community member than to be able to honor Mr. Hooky here tonight. When I joined the Board 10 years ago, you had been serving under my predecessor, Ms. Tessie Wilson, and I was so grateful that you came from the Braddock District and it just continued to represent the very best that we have to offer here in this county. I know it has been long, long hours, long days, weeks, months, and years, and with every passing year, you continue to bring such passion and energy and devotion to making this one of the most important advisory councils that we have really come to rely upon. So on behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, the Braddock District community, I just want to personally convey to you, Mr. Hooky, how deeply grateful I am for everything that you have done, and I hope that we will continue to stay connected with one another. Best wishes to you as you begin your new journeys and your new adventures.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
Absolutely. I had the great fortune of getting to serve with Charlie on FPAC for two years. His zeal for making FCPS the best that it can be for all of our students was evident in every single thing that he did. From pushing for us to look at capacity issues, facility issues like HVAC and EdSpecs, green initiatives, and design justice, you have always made FPAC a better place by being there. And your absolutely infectious smile that starts with a twinkle in your eyes, and your wit and your dedication will absolutely be missed. So thank you for everything that you have done. Fairfax County is a better place because of you. Thank you.
I will now call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Seismor Heizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. That vote is unanimous.
At this time, Mr. Hooky, I would like to invite you and family, friends, to come join the Board for a photo, and thank you again for your service.
Agenda item 2.06, Voter Registration Resolution, and I call on Ms. Tolan for the recognition.
Thank you. Whereas voting is the most important civic responsibility of United States citizens and is the cornerstone of our democracy, and whereas a Virginia law requires every public high school to provide opportunities for eligible students to register to vote during the school day, and National Voter Registration Day is September 28th, and whereas the ethical and global citizen attribute of the FCPS Portrait of a Graduate is an expectation for all students that includes understanding and valuing the rights, privileges, and responsibilities associated with the United States, and schools are committed to developing students who will exercise those rights and responsibilities as citizens. And whereas civic education contributes to the development of engaged citizens and increases the likelihood of future participation in voting, providing information to students about voter registration, voting procedures, when and where to vote, and how to become informed about election issues, prepares students to exercise their voting rights, and whereas young people who are registered to vote participate in numbers close to the participation rate of older voters, voting is habit-forming. When young people exercise their voting rights, they are likely to become lifelong voters, exercising their duties and responsibilities as citizens. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes the efforts of the League of Women Voters of the Fairfax area, the Fairfax County Office of Elections, Fairfax County Council of PTAs, and the FCPS Social Studies Team and Teachers who provide voter registration opportunities and nonpartisan information about voting to eligible students. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Fairfax County School Board will support and recognize schools that make significant contributions to student voter registration and voter education. This recognition is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Fairfax area and the Fairfax County Council of PTAs. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnak Kofax. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yes, please. The League of Women Voters of the Fairfax area and the Fairfax Office of Elections have provided voter registration assistance to Fairfax County Public Schools for more than 10 years. Four years ago, these efforts increased with the assistance of the Fairfax County Council of PTAs. During the 2018-2019 school year, approximately 6,000 students registered to vote through their efforts. Due to the pandemic, we were not able to track the number of students registered during the 2019-2020 and 2020-21 school years, but the Office of Elections estimated that the registration numbers were similar to previous years. During the last school year, when volunteers did not work inside our school buildings, the League of Women Voters provided 92 virtual lessons to nearly 3,000 students. These virtual presentations were often tailored to meet specific teacher needs and objectives. Teachers also had access to League of Women Voter-created PowerPoints and videos that are available on their website. Voter registration events have already started this school year, with four high schools requesting voter registration assistance in advance of October 12th, the fall deadline for voter registration. Since most seniors will be age-eligible to register after this general election in November, most schools will provide their voter registration activities after winter break. High school voter registration is an important step toward promoting active citizenship and increasing the percentage of citizens who are registered voters. Pat Veggie is in our office tonight, and she is with the League of Women Voters in the Fairfax area here in the front. Thank you, Pat, and to your colleagues for the value of service you provide to our community. Pat has graciously declined a photo opportunity, but she did leave for each Board Member little brochures and information about facts about voting, so I'll make sure everybody gets that. Thank you.
Ms. Darnak Kofax, would you like to share some thoughts?
Yes. I too want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Fairfax Office of Elections, our County Council of PTAs, and our amazing social studies teams for your partnership and hard work to help us educate and motivate our students to understand the important rights and privileges of voting in our democracy. We appreciate all of your support, and we appreciate the spirited competitions you provide to inspire our high school students to begin their involvement in our political process. And in Region 3, I am proud to represent the Hayfield Hawks, who have won this competition, this voter registration competition many times, so I'm looking forward to more spirited competitions and colleagues' voter game on to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other Board Members wishing to speak, I will now... Oh, I'm so sorry. It wasn't working, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes. I just wanted to thank the League of Women Voters, and also put in a plug for your other work that you're doing. I know that you are conducting debates in support of the upcoming election, and I would encourage all of our students to take advantage of the fact that all these debates are done via Zoom, and so it's a wonderful way of becoming civically engaged, and I just so appreciate all that the League does in not only registering our students to vote, but also teaching them our civic values. So thank you.
Ms. Seismor Heizer?
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, but I wanted to share my personal perspective on how important your work is. I was, as a child of immigrants, I was the first in my family to vote. I was the first one in my family to be a citizen. I had no idea how to do it. I had no idea where to register. I didn't know we needed to register. I remember going to vote and walking in going, "What do you mean? I'm not on the list. I'm a citizen." And so the work you do in bringing this to our high schools to teach our students how to register and how to vote, which is essential to our democracy, is vital and so welcomed and appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. I will now call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Seismor Heizer, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. That vote is unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as a capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings or ever. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and the letter of the school division's nondiscrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the school board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. In-person speakers should wear a mask when addressing the Board. We are very grateful to all of you who have come to speak to us today, and we do thank you for your cooperation.
Our first speaker is Liam Ride. Liam Ride. Our next speaker is Gay Athree Von Galu. Gay Athree Von Galu. Our next speaker is Tyrone Santos.
Hello. I hope it's helpful if I partly explain why millions of Americans choose to be unvaccinated. A vaccine only serves two purposes: it protects the person from death and disease, and two, it stops the transmission of disease to others. So for the first point, I mean, survival rate without treatment for unvaccinated people is 99.997% for people under 20, and 99.98% for people aged 20 to 50. The risk unvaccinated people take is their choice. It has nothing to do with you or anyone else for that matter. I would wager you guys believe in my body, my choice, so take that. And so for the second point, don't cause harm to others. On August 5th, CDC Director Dr. Rochelle Walensky told CNN what the vaccines can't do anymore is prevent transmission. In other words, vaccinated people are getting infected and transmitting the virus to others. So if the vaccine protects you, go get yourself vaccinated. If the vaccine doesn't protect you, then why are you forcing a vaccine on someone if it doesn't even protect them? You can't have it both ways. So for kids under 12 who aren't eligible for a vaccine, I'll just say more kids died from the flu in the 2018-2019 season than kids have died from the virus in the last 18 months. And no one was advocating for masks two years ago, so take those masks off, too. I mean, I beg... I beg you to answer three questions. You need to answer three questions and communicate your answers to the constituents to explain why you're forcing people to inject something into their body. So what is the actual risk of... So, what is the actual risk of serious injury or death for unvaccinated people of different ages? How effective are the vaccines at blocking infection and transmission to others? Why aren't there exemptions for people with natural immunity? So, three questions. You need to tell everybody that. Thanks for your time, and God bless America.
Our next speaker is Dinesh Kumar. Dinesh Kumar. Our next speaker is Abhay Baghu.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity. During last two school board meetings, a number of parents have asked for remote learning options, and I do not want to repeat the arguments. The board knows all the arguments very well, but I'm baffled by the lack of compelling responses from the board, as taxpayers of the county concerns and ask our parents should not be ignored. The board continues to state that in-person schooling is the best option for kids, and the remote option will cause hardship for teachers. We all know that in-person is the best option, but there are very good reasons why so many parents are asking for the virtual option. The staggering numbers of COVID infections cannot be ignored. What about the hardships of parents who are forced to make decisions to continue to put their unvaccinated kids at risk every day or pull them out of school? These are the only two choices offered by the board. The board continues to use SB 1303 as the justification for in-person schooling, but Virginia Department of Education states, and I quote, "Schools may, at their discretion, offer virtual instructions to students throughout the year, and let families determine which mode of instruction is best for their students, even the uncertainties of COVID-19." I understand the board is willing to provide one-way streaming option to quarantine students, but not willing to consider a full virtual option to those who are asking for it. Can you help me understand what is the rationale behind that? So, I again urge FCPS to take clue from neighboring and other counties, for example, York County, Arlington County, who are able to provide virtual options at no cost to the parents. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. I am here as an individual to speak about the special education audit. I am hurt, I am exhausted, and I am angry. You know I don't say that lightly. I've been speaking to the school board and FCPS leadership for four years now, bringing to light significant concerns primarily regarding the experience for students with complex support needs, including those on the adapted curriculum and in self-contained classrooms. Throughout those four years, I have heard the constant refrain that FCPS serves every child by name and by need, and I have consistently shown how FCPS is not meeting the needs of these students or their teachers. When this school board pushed for the comprehensive special education audit, I was buoyed, knowing that an outside firm with expertise was coming and gave me hope. But while I agree with the overall findings of AIR's report, I am also angry that students on the adapted curriculum are entirely invisible in its work to date. When AIR was asked about data for the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program, the means by which students accessing adapted curriculum are assessed by the state, they seemed confused and had no answer. Who is responsible for this omission? AIR, FCPS leadership, or both? The one mention of the VAP in the 100-page report is where it is used as an example of the breadth and depth of FCPS's professional development, a strength. I find this utterly absurd, given I've heard repeatedly from CATB teachers that FCSPD does not apply to their classrooms or needs. The breadth and depth of PD cannot be considered a strength if the offerings are not of high quality and don't address what teachers need to serve their students, facts supported by the staff survey data. I thank the school board for questioning AIR and FCPS on this omission. That said, this incident again demonstrates that the education of children on the adapted curriculum is not as valued as that of their peers, which is inexcusable. Until this is rectified on a systemic level, FCPS must stop speaking to how it meets every child by name and by need. It is hurtful and insulting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Manjunav.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I am here to request you to provide a virtual schooling option along with the in-person option and let parents choose the option they want. I do not want to repeat what my fellow concerned parents shared already now and in the previous meeting. However, I have a few questions to the board. Are the kids and the infection just numbers for you? Don't you validate their life and future? In September alone, in just 23 days, over 600 cases have been identified. It is how the infection being controlled? That dashboard update is also delayed, I see every day. I saw a few pictures posted by schools on social media, and it's very clear that no social distinction is followed in schools. We need to learn from others' mistakes, like India and other countries where infections skyrocketed. Is board ready to guarantee that my kid won't be infected at school? Will the board take any responsibility for any mishap? And finally, while you are able to provide live-streaming to kids in quarantine, why can't you offer the same to all? Are you waiting for the so-called numbers to go out of control to make addition? I hope you'll make a wise decision soon and provide virtual options. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Mary Beth Style.
Good evening. I prepared a statement as a parent and a social worker to talk about mental health issues and the damage that you're doing to our children with your family life education programs, your critical race theory, and your gender theory. You've got my written statement, and as I read it, it was three and a half minutes long. It used to be that you'd let us have three minutes. You can't even get a resolution out on civic involvement in two minutes, and you tell us you value that, and you say, "Sure, come up here, you got two minutes." There's no point in me spending hours reducing that to two minutes. So, tonight, I'm not going to waste my time. I'm going to spend it talking to the one being that will listen to me and that can make a difference, because you don't want to hear what I have to say anyway, and there's nothing I can say in two minutes that'll make a difference to you. So, I ask the Holy Spirit to come down and give you the gifts so that you can better serve the children and the families of the family of Fairfax County in line with God's will. For the gift of wisdom, come, Holy Spirit. For the gift of understanding, come, Holy Spirit. For the gift of counsel, come, Holy Spirit. For the gift of fortitude, come, Holy Spirit. For the gift of knowledge, come, Holy Spirit. For the gift of piety, come, Holy Spirit. For the gift of all of the Lord, come, Holy Spirit. Saint Michael the Archangel, defend us in battle. Be our protection against the wickedness and snares of the devil. May God rebuke when we humbly pray, and through thou, heavenly host, by the power of God, cast into hell all Satan and all evil spirits who prowl about the world seeking the ruin of souls. Amen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Cates.
On behalf of the Fairfax County SEPTA, thank you to the board and FCPS for choosing to invest in AIR's special education audit, and we hope that you will continue to make the necessary future investments to remedy the identified problems. In this final year of the study, we ask that it is ensured that the following happens: Additional IEPs are reviewed to bring the study closer to statistical representation of our special education population. Focus groups are truly representative of the entire special education spectrum, encompassing all placements, diploma tracks, curricula races, social economic statuses, English language learners, and especially the students' voices. Investigate adaptive curriculum and students on the VAP track from the perspective of parents and staff, as this was glaringly omitted. Staff has repeatedly expressed unique challenges and problems with the lack of available curriculum materials, multi-age classrooms, and no planning time. More specific data disaggregation, especially by placement and level of support. Students with the same eligibility level can be in vastly different placements with extremely different support needs. Inclusion of the role and impact of ATS on our students and staff. ATS was also glaringly omitted, and there was little to no representation of other related service providers. Zero social workers from FCPS completed the initial staff survey. In-depth investigation into the fidelity of implementation of instruction. This is a major area of concern and one that AIR noted they did not yet address in year one. We encourage the public to view AIR's well-written and presented interim report. Especially noteworthy is that every area of concern listed by AIR is a concern that SEPTA and other special education advocates have been bringing to this board and leadership for years with little to no resulting changes. FCPS must use these findings to implement sweeping changes. The status quo does not serve every child by name and by need. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hemang Nagar.
Hello. Hello. The people of Fairfax County actually watched the FCPS working session on Tuesday, the September 21st. The session actually looked as if it was a scene from the movie Idiots. We were absolutely appalled when you use word like burden. It's a burden for you to educate the children of Fairfax County. For that burden, you are paying $3.4 billion, billion with a B. Well, what you basically call it as a burden is the very reason for your existence. And to add to this, I have never, ever seen a person so proudly proclaim their incompetence as it the superintendent of FCPS. If it's a burden to take 300K for being this incompetent, maybe it's time for you to find something else which is less burdensome for you. Also absolutely appalling was the school members who were actually agreeing with him. So, I have a few questions for the school board members. Why is he allowed to complete the term when he's actively looking to sabotage education and mental health of kids? Second, at what point is the search for the new superintendent? Or are you looking to run out of the clock like you did the last time? We also heard in a brief that was over there that the school board member and the superintendent wanted to mandate vaccinations for children. Well, there is another news for you. Both of you neither have the education or the authority to do that. Virginia Code, Chapter 456, clearly states that FC...
Our next speaker is Malik Arjun Barugu.
My dear brothers and sisters of this board, everybody agree like a human being was born in Africa, that makes all of us cousins. My son and daughter are nephews and nieces for you, for everyone, all of the school people. Your nephews and nieces are frightened to go to school as of now. There might be some who want to go. We are not obstructing. We are not obstructing for in-person school, but your nephews and nieces are frightened. Your brothers, my wife, your sisters, she is frightened, my sister, your sister is frightened to send her kids to school. Please listen, please listen. I'm not telling logic. There's no logic. My friends already told the logic. We are not against in-person, again, I'm telling you. In-person can go on, you can do anything, but give us an option, please. We are all like an amicable living. We call sarve janasukunavavanti. That means we are like a family. What happens, something to happen to your family, your son, your dad, or something, you will take care, you will listen to them. Please do that one. Please, hear us. What happened last year with 1,000 cases? Whole economy was shut down. Now, 200,000 cases, nobody is worried, and still 55% of people are not vaccinated. Can't you believe it? It's data. Then why is it different from last year? We are not asking you to reinvent the wheel. Just take, please take last year's model. Please listen to your nieces, your nephews, your sisters, brothers. We are family. Our society can exist only as a family. We cannot divide. If somebody disagrees, please listen to them.
Our next speaker is Adrienne Hensel.
Good evening. My name is Adrienne Hensel. I am a Fairfax County taxpayer and a former Fairfax County public schools teacher. I am here to protest the use of Fairfax taxpayers' money in a campaign to normalize homoerotic material with minors. As part of this campaign, the school libraries in Fairfax Public Schools are promoting books that graphically depict homosexual acts. To cite just two examples, recently, at Fairfax High, the school library promoted an array of LGBTQ-themed books by putting them on prominent display. One of these was the graphic novel Gender Queer by Maya Kobabe. Page 167 features two panels clearly depicting one of the high school-age protagonists acting out oral sex on another high schooler. I have a copy of the page here and requested it be entered into the school meeting. Another book promoted at the school's library, Lawn Boy by Jonathan Evison, is loaded with similar material. For instance, on page 91, one adult male character graphically describes engaging in fellatio with male minors. Other taxpayers have found similar examples in the school libraries and in reading assigned as homework. This indoctrination effort includes other branches of the county government. For example, on June 26th, there was a drag story hour at the McLean branch of the public library, where the McLean Community Center paid tax dollars to drag queens to perform for children aged four through eight. Fairfax County taxpayers don't want their tax dollars...
Our next speaker is Stacy Langton. Stacy Langton.
After seeing a September 9th school board meeting in Texas on pornography in the schools, I decided to check the titles at my child's school, Fairfax High School. The books were available, and we checked them out. Both of these books include pedophilia, sex between men and boys. Both books describe different acts. One book describes a fourth-grade boy performing oral sex on an adult male. The other book has detailed illustrations of a man having sex with a boy. The illustrations include fellatio, sex toys, masturbation, and violent nudity. Pedophilia here from the author, Maya Kobabe. Quote... From the author, Jonathan Evison. This is not an oversight at Fairfax High School. This material...
There are children in the audience here.
Do not interrupt my time! Do not interrupt my time!
I would like to remind everybody that we have a speaker.
I will stand here until my time is restored and my time is finished. These books are in stock and available in the libraries of Robinson...
For high school students, ma'am.
Langley and Annandale High School. Pornography is offensive to all people. It is offensive to common decency. It is the reason why the MPAA...
Our next speaker is Alex Levine. Our next speaker is Alex Levine. Our next speaker is Alex Levine.
Ms. Badeha, can you please call the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Alex Levine.
We'd like to have our next speaker come to the podium, please. Ma'am, your time has ended. The microphone has turned off. If you cannot follow rules of decorum, this school board, without objection, will take a five-minute break to clear the room. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, madam clerk. Madam Clerk, I believe their board called a five-minute recess. Yeah. It's a five-minute recess.
Excuse me, the board, excuse me. The board will now take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
School board members, take your seats, please. We're now going to reconvene our business meeting. In order for the board to conduct the public business, it is crucial that those in attendance not shout, interrupt other speakers, or otherwise engage in disruptive conduct. If there is any such disruptive conduct, you will be escorted out of this room. Ms. Badeha?
Our next speaker is Alex Levine.
Each week, FCPS pauses more than 700 healthy students, depriving these kids of school for an average of 10 days. And these numbers keep growing. FCPS has done little to address this problem beyond tweaking some of its procedures and offering the Band-Aid of streaming some classes. The best solution of test to stay has been largely not considered. The failure here is twofold. FCPS hasn't implemented a policy that would better serve our children, and, second, it hasn't even researched it. The delay is harming students. The superintendent's explanation for this failure has been to point to the finger at health agencies. This ignores that test to stay is being successfully used throughout the country and in Virginia, including in Arlington and Falkirk Counties, both of which have, which permit students to return to school after five days with a negative test. As the superintendent conceded in the Tuesday meeting, the ultimate call for this policy lies with Gatehouse. On Tuesday, he provided this slide purporting to show the risks if the quarantine period was reduced. Yet, this slide actually doesn't show that. First, this slide assumes that the person quarantining is infected, which is overwhelmingly not the case in schools. LA schools have been testing close contacts and of 30,000 people been testing close contacts, and of 30,000 people quarantined, only 63 people have tested positive, an attack rate of 0.2%. Another study from the UK found that less than 2% of close contacts later tested positive. Second, the slide ignores the fact that the risks go way down if there's diagnostic testing. So with a test after day 10, CDC has said that the risk is 0.3%, and that's using the false assumption that every quarantined person is infected. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Naomi Petco. Naomi Petco. Our next speaker is Ashra Nemaney.
My name is Ashra Nemaney. I'm a survivor of Fairfax County Public Schools. My son was a student here for 13 years. I am now a taxpayer and I am a citizen, and I don't even know where to begin. I mean, the display that you had tonight, not even able to listen to the truth that a mother was sharing about a book available in our public school system, is embarrassing. The fact that on the eve of 9/11, you, Abrahar Omesh, couldn't even vote to honor the 9/11 victims and those that were the first responders is embarrassing. And today, we now have a survey going out to all of our students and their parents, and in it, you are giving $1.8 million to an organization, Panorama Education, in which Mark Zuckerberg has invested, and in which now, this company outside of our school district has now the authority as representatives, as officials of the school board, in the caveat in their contract language. You're wasting taxpayer money, you're ignoring parents, there's a poor kid here who has been holding up a sign, his arms are so, so tired now because they're simply trying to get a virtual option. When are you going to take time to actually listen to the citizens that want to participate in our school system? I mean, this is your duty and this is your responsibility. Listen to them. They are crying for your ears, and they are crying for you to hear them, so that you can actually do something that is culturally responsible and listen to those that are in our culture here in Fairfax County, the citizens that want to be heard. Please listen to them, they beg you, and the taxpayers will respond accordingly if you cannot listen to them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christopher Henzel. Christopher Henzel. Our next speaker is Naga Deepak Yanduru.
Good evening. Thank you for providing with me an opportunity to address the board. Until very recently, I thought I am a proud FCPS parent, but the recent actions or lack of them from the FCPS authorities and the utter apathy from the school board makes me really doubt if I am really such a proud parent. In the past one year, I lost six loved ones, not one, not two, not three, six loved ones due to COVID. I am an immunocompromised parent. I represent many people who lost their loved ones to COVID, and I also represent many such parents who are immunocompromised, who are not left with any option. You have not given us any option. We are chosen with only two alternatives, either to send the kids to the school or protect our families. We request you to provide a virtual learning option. We are not engaged in-person learning. We request you, we beg you, and we appeal to provide an in, a virtual learning option. Many counties have resorted to providing such an option. FCPS, which is one of the highly funded education system in the country, Fairfax County, one of the richest counties in US, if you are not able to provide this option, that's a mere excuse. Again, so many speakers have today requested to consider our request. Just...
Tonight, we also have one video testimony, Smita Mandalaparti.
My name is Smita Mandalaparti. I'm here to raise my concerns about in-person learning. I thank you all for trying all mitigation strategies to keep our kids safe. You're doing your best, but this isn't working. Cases are raising and kids are getting affected. This bill, SB 1303, is obsolete now. Delta variant has changed the dynamics. Earlier kids were not at risk, but now they are, the vulnerable. CDC guidelines have also proved it, and also the overcrowded pediatric ICUs. Overwhelmed doctors are shouting this from the top of their lungs. FCPS proudly accommodates every kid with every kind of ailment, but why this kind of regidity towards virtual learning? Why are you not ready to give it a try at least? When it is possible to give virtual learning option to quarantined kids, why not to the others? This kind of adjustment will help in-person kids to have more social distancing. Let the teacher teach in the class, and just telecast that to the virtual kids, and let the teacher hold a Q&amp;A session, and let the kids email, or let the kids email their questions. We are just asking to telecast or transmit these lessons or these classes. You heard us all numerous times. We have been blasting emails and making calls and showing up to these meetings, believing in you. It is time for you to act now. Our kids are not any guinea pigs in your labs where you experiment with them. As a parent, we have the right and responsibility to choose the best for our kids. We choose virtual or concurrent learning. You helped us in different situations in the past. With this, why this indifference now? What is or who is holding you back in making your right decision? This is Mental Health Month, and this situation has put us through such a stress that we are losing our sleep and sanity. I ask you to act now and give us virtual or distant learning option. Thank you for your time.
Agenda item 3.03, Opening of Schools Report. I call on Dr. Ray Brand for the presentation.
Members of the school board, Chairman Pekarsky, and ladies and gentlemen of the community, good evening. I am thrilled to bring you our annual opening of schools report, our 2021 report. If we could start with the very first slide up, just the cover slide. Thank you. Really excited. We bring this to you all every year in the community, and I'm happy to present this annual report, which is an overview of our demographics, our hiring statistics, our budget, technology, capital improvements, among other key information that I'll be sharing with you tonight. Let's start with just some descriptive pieces about Fairfax County Public Schools. If we can go to the next slide, please. We continue, if we can go to the next slide. We continue to be the largest school system in Virginia with 199 schools and centers, some fast facts, 24,000 employees, 86% of our budget focused on instruction, 173 Energy Star schools that helped save annually $7 million in energy savings. Our demographics, enrollment as of September 17th, we're still waiting for the big September 30th membership report is 178,000. In July, we had 171,000 students registered for this fall, so we were really able, and our returning strong got 6, 7,000, 7,000 students and families to return this year, and that was our direct outreach through our community, and really happy to get those back. That does fall short of our FYI 21 projected enrollment, and this is a tentative enrollment number. We think this number may change once we certify our enrollment and membership to the state on September 30th. It's also important to know that while our enrollment fell short of projection, we're 2,000 more students than our usual homeschool enrollment. Our homeschool enrollment over the last several years prior to the pandemic was about 3,000. We have over 5,000 now, and we're being told by our principals that many of our homeschool families will be returning when the vaccination is available for elementary students. So we'll continue to keep you abreast on our enrollment process as we move forward through this school year. Fairfax, as you know, is very diverse with over 200 countries and 200 languages, and we continue to take pride in the diversity of our system. We also take pride in our division success. One of the things I wanted to share with you that has just come out is our four-year on-time graduation rate has gone from 91% in 2019. It went up last year and is now at 94.6% among the highest graduation rates ever in Fairfax County Public Schools. These rates continue to show advances in closing achievement gaps for the three groups where our division historically had lower graduation rates than the average. Since 2019, Hispanic and EL learners saw a gain of nine points to the graduation rate, and economically disadvantaged, seven points, and for the second year in a row, students with disabilities graduated at a higher rate than the division average. Graduation rates were boosted through some state flexibilities, allowing locally awarded verified credits for courses completed during COVID in lieu of the SOLs, and the ongoing work that we have done to provide graduation coordinators through your budget support at our schools. We'll continue to have more details about our on-time graduation rate when the state releases data at the end of the month. Just a couple of other highlights, about 85% of our graduates report post-secondary work and programs following high school. We have 73% that take APIB or do enrollment, that's that college-ready rigor, and we had 212 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists in 2021. Our SATs just came out, and they continue to be above state and global averages. And while the state had a dramatic drop in participation, the College Board saw a 31% drop in SATs and a 33% drop in Virginia. Ours dropped only 4% as we created equity of access to have SAT Day for our students in September of last year, and we're going to continue to offer the SAT at no charge to students this year in October. We saw SAT scores improve for Asian, Black, and Hispanic students in 2021. If we can go to the next slide, I want to say with all the positive things that we're going to present today, it's important that we continue to be transparent with challenges to ensure equitable access across the division. We know this is a challenge that we need to continue to face and confront every year. We opened the school year, I did as superintendent in our leadership conference, talking about returning to learning with joy and vigor, but also talking about our AAA framework of affirming, assessing, and advancing, so that we can have continuous improvement and really exceed expectations for all of our students, regardless of who they are and where they live. Our focus for this year is to see our students returning strong by listening and responding to their needs, by meeting them where they are academically and emotionally, and by opening doors for them so that they find and rediscover the joy in learning after being, for most of them, many, many months in virtual education. And so we do this by keeping equity at the center and strengthening practices. Our K2 literacy, we'll be talking about that on an upcoming work session, our multi-tiered systems of support, our SEL work with advisory teams, and again, all of our Portrait of a Graduate strategies that we're doing in schools. And as I mentioned to you earlier, we continue to do the AAA framework of affirm, assess, and advance as we work with each and every student in our school system. It's important, as we do that work, if we go to the next slide, to talk about our supports for families. They're going to remain critical for the 21, 22 school years. We all work to transition out of this pandemic and back to full in-person instruction as we've done this year. Let me talk a little bit about the supports for families. Last year, as part of the Distance Learning Survey, we asked families to share their experiences and perceptions on family engagement. Close to 90% of families who responded to the survey told us they and their child felt respected by schools and school staff. Our spring responses were more positive than what parents had reported when these same questions were asked on an earlier family engagement survey. And in fact, we saw meaningful improvement in "my child felt respected by teachers and other staff." Back in December of last year, when we did the survey, it was 84%, it went to 88%. When we talked about supporting our kids when there's stressful situations in their life, it went from 64% when we asked last year to 72%. There is improvement, but we know there is still much work to do, and many of our populations that are underrepresented in the survey still need to continue to be reached out to, and we need to look at their perceptions as we move forward. It's critical that we continue to affirm all of our families and all of our students to create an environment that's conducive for belonging and engagement. One of the things we've done as we've returned, we've had open houses, welcome walks, family welcome-back calls. We did a lot of personal calls over the summer, Collect for Kids, which is done in partnership with our education foundation. We did a first day of school communication countdown, and we had our back-to-school nights available in many different ways, both virtual, in-person, and hybrid. I really want to thank all of our team doing so much to help reconnect our community during this pandemic and really help create new connections for students and families. And I know it was a lot of work to do that, not only to open the year, but to continue the year, this school year. Additional supports that we're working on with our families is, we've worked to create additional funding for our schools for the family liaison. We used to call that the parent liaison, but we have now broadened or redefined that as family liaisons. And this year, 31 new schools that have never had this support for families now have a family liaison. We've had the Getting to Know FCPS Orientation for Families. It's been hosted through a hybrid model in multiple languages, and we're excited about the expansion at our division school levels for our military-connected youth and families. We have the most military-connected youth and families in the state of Virginia, and we continue to support them through the Student Ambassador Programs, bi-weekly coffees and family support groups through the Parent Resource Center, and Military Family Life Counselors. We have 34 schools, as this board knows, that have been recognized as a Purple Star School by VDOE, and we will continue to support and increase the number of schools that are creating this and winning this designation by the Virginia Department of Education. Some other additional support for families include our Parent Resource Center. They have weekly webinars on a variety of topics. We have Parent Resource Packs, which are prepackaged tote bags with books and resources for adults and children, and I really hope parents will go to our website to learn more about all of the opportunities that you see here and more available on our website for family engagement. We also want to continue to expand communication supports to provide timely information. I've done many town hall meetings over this last year as we've been in the pandemic and as we've returned to school, and we will continue to do them. We video stream them into families and communities. We've had a weekly newsletter that we've shared with families. We have parent information phone lines available in eight languages, United Language Interpretation Services. We've done multilingual podcasts in Spanish, Arabic, and Korean. I participated in all three. I spoke more of Spanish in Spanish and did my best with Arabic and Korean in those podcasts. And we continue to have a Talking Points website app that really helps teachers provide translation communication between families and schools. We also support families through transportation and transporting their kids. I know the year was off to a challenging start with some long runs, and our transportation folks, Jeff Plannenberg, Francine Furby, have done an amazing job to really address some of the issues that we had starting the year, and I know this board will be considering additional action tonight around supporting our transportation family here in FCPS that's doing so much for kids. Over 1,600 school buses that run daily, 23 million bus rides each year. It's an amazing, amazing program that we have with transportation. So I'm really excited for everything that they continue to do, and we have our Here Comes the Bus app that helps give some real-time information on bus arrival. I also want to talk not just about our amazing transportation folks, but food and nutrition. We served last year over 14 million meals and snacks in the middle More than five hundred thousand no-cost meals were provided over the summer months. We continue to expand healthy offerings, and here for you to know, this year, we have no-cost breakfast and lunch available to students. Our participation in food and nutrition has increased twenty-five percent compared to pre-COVID levels. We now have twenty-eight thousand meals per day. I'm sorry, an increase of over twenty-eight thousand meals per day because now, on average, we're doing a hundred and thirty-eight thousand meals, including breakfast and lunch served per day, and last week's participation has gone all the way up to a hundred and fifty thousand, our largest combination of meals ever in Fairfax County public schools. For our safety and security, that remains our top priority. Safety and tabletop training will continue and be completed in all schools this year. All of our crisis management guides have been updated. Safety training has already begun this year, and additional safety and security personnel were deployed as we returned to school during those first two weeks to ensure everyone returned safely. And we continue to have a strong partnership with Fairfax County's Department of Public Safety and the Fairfax County Police Department to ensure the safety of our schools and school communities. I want to talk a little bit now about student success, one of our key goals in the strategic plan, and I want to begin by talking about school accreditation and recognition. The pandemic has resulted in learning impacts that we're all aware of, and accreditation continues to be waived for all schools in twenty-one, twenty-two. SOL tests given in person this year will be used to calculate future academic indicators towards school accreditation. Also new this year, we've mentioned before, but it's worth reminding the community that in grades three through eight, spring SOL results will be compared from results last spring to measure growth, but we'll also have a new shorter Virginia Growth Assessment that kids will be taking for the first time this fall. We'll be able to measure growth from either last year, last spring to next spring, or from this fall to this current spring, and that'll be a greater opportunity to really demonstrate progress for students and progress for schools and supporting students. Student success also resulted in expanded summer learning. We talked about this with the board through multiple work sessions. We had a sixty-six percent increase in the number of students we were able to serve over the previous four-year average. We served the diverse needs of over thirty thousand students in the summer through face-to-face and virtual programs, and we had new elementary and middle school programs with the focus on math and literacy. We had a new bridge, or an expanded bridge to kindergarten, an expanded bridge to first grade, and we had Young Scholar programs along with our ESY. Our summer enrichment, as you look at Expanded Summer Learning too, was a mixture of some very familiar programs, enrichment camps. We were able to cover the costs for students on free and reduced lunch, and those enrollments, for the first time, enrichment camps that before were paid, now allowed thirty percent of our students in those enrichment camps were free and reduced lunch students. We had our College Success Program that gave weekly supports to students in our program, and we had and gave out over three hundred thousand summer practice books mailed directly to students to help them continue to learn during the summer. We also did some updated curriculum and digital resources to port our students in the return for five days of in-person learning to be able to help them continue to have access to high-quality resources and to really help support learning. So the curriculum updates ensure alignment with our standards of learning this year and prioritize essential standards that are relevant to students. We have required phonological awareness and phonics lessons, and K-two is part of our Equitable Access to Literacy Plan. You'll be learning and hearing more about that at an upcoming work session. We did work on our curriculum to address the social, emotional, and academic learning of our students and additional culturally responsive practices, and we provided purposeful assessments for students to gauge student learning needs and their progress. We also had some additional digital literacy resources that we used last year and continued into this year, and a new learning management system called Schoology that was already in use by students and families and educators across the country. We did a pilot of it last year and expanded it to all of our schools this year. We've also done significant work with technology to support student success. We tripled bandwidth in our schools with growing demand for connectivity. We had new technology like Schoology, as I mentioned, but also new Zoom, which has replaced Blackboard, is our learning for synchronous learning. We had multiple upgrades to our student information system, and we've all seen the impact of cyber threats in our country on multiple public institutions. We've not been immune to that, and we've invested in new technologies, including creating a new cybersecurity office and focusing on critical long-term technology enhancements across our division. Some additional technology support I want to mention to you, we've really worked to provide much, much more expanded device access, and now devices are in the hands of all kids through your leadership and the Board of Supervisors. There is no more technology fee for FCPS ON. That fee has been removed permanently, so thank you. We provided Mi-Fi and low-cost internet subsidies for families without home internet and did a terrific job there. We set up last year in the pandemic a technology help desk for families that needed help with technology, and we continue to have that up and running, and we're really, really, very, very pleased with that. We know how important it is for technology to support classroom engagement, and really technology now, as we work to come out of this pandemic, will be a constant companion for our students as we move forward. And we continue to support our school tech teams, who support our teachers in providing strong student digital learning experiences to be paired with in-person learning. We have thirty-eight thousand student laptops, newer laptops that we provided at elementary school. We have additional teacher laptops for our IAs and other support staff, and really, really pleased with all of our technology support. I want to thank our CIO, Gotham Sethi, for his leadership. He came to us just as the pandemic began and has done a tremendous amount of work in his team under the leadership of COO Marty Smith to really take us to another level with our technology supports for students and staff. I want to talk about caring culture, which is another important part of our strategic plan. First, the Foundation for FCPS continues to be a vital partner with us and support students and teachers with teacher grants, kids in need school supplies, and the support of our FCPS Honors Recognition Program. The Foundation got over one point four million dollars this year and provided grants to teachers in the system, over seventy-three teachers, giving them each over thirteen hundred dollars on average. This year, the Foundation welcomes some new members to the Board of Directors. Mark Testone, who's the CEO of SAP NS2, Rick Lightwise, who is at the Keller Center at Anova, and Jose Bazón, who is with White Sixty-four. They're all new members of the Foundation Board, and we welcome them and the Foundation's continued support of Fairfax County schools and community. Also with caring culture is fostering mental health awareness, wellness. We know with the impacts of the pandemic, student mental health and wellness is more important than ever before. We focused on professional development to support students who may be displaying mental health challenges. We've worked to do more youth mental health first aid and teen mental health first aid so students can learn strategies around mental health. This year, all of our seventh, ninth, and eleventh grade students will participate in the Signs of Suicide or SOS program. Families will be able to have access to wellness resources through the Parent Resource Center. We continue to partner with the Fairfax and Falls Church Community Services Board, Anova and Kaiser, with our annual Mental Health Wellness Conference that will be held the week of September twenty-seventh. Hope many of you will be able to go to that, and students will be able to have the ability to participate in student sessions at this conference as well. Part of our caring culture too is to really focus, as we said, on social, emotional learning, universal practices in our school, dedicated time at all grade levels, both elementary grades and secondary grades, for explicit social and emotional instruction, whether it's in a morning meeting at elementary or advisory periods in secondary. Schools are focused on positive relationship building with students and building strong, positive school climates. Our counselors, our psychologists, and social workers are providing tiered supports, and we know that supporting our students with their social, emotional health is more important than ever. If we go to the next slide, we are rolling out division-wide our SEL screener, which will allow kids in grades three through twelve to self-reflect on their skills and their needs three times a year. Kids in grades kindergarten through second, teachers will be completing a screener with each of their kids, and the results will be shared with schools and families and used as part of our existing multi-tiered systems of support so we can directly provide intervention for those kids. We also want to, in a caring culture, ensure that students and staff have voice. As you know, this is key to having a strong school system. We're continuing our Student Equity Ambassador Leads Program. They're the SEAL team, and we have SEAL kids at our middle and high schools helping elevate equity in all of our schools. We're continuing the work of understanding the gaps to access and learning opportunities that we assess through the school's equity audit processes, and we've convened fireside and Twitter chats to keep two-way dialogue going with our students and staff. So we need to keep creating the space so that we can keep equity at the center of all that we do, and it means elevating student and staff voice. Part of doing that is having a premier workforce, which is another one of our key strategic plan goals, our third goal in our strategic plan, and I want to provide some updates for you here. So as of September first, we hired almost nineteen hundred new teachers this school year. We remain committed to building a diverse workforce. Teachers and staff of color serve as strong, positive role models for all students. We've talked about this now for several years, and I'm pleased to report continued progress in two areas. We've increased hiring of individuals who self-identify as Hispanic and Latino by one point three-six percent. We've increased hiring of people who identify as people of color by five point four-six percent over last year. Thirty-two percent of our total teacher hires this year are people of color, which is an improvement from twenty-six percent last year. We are continuing to know and reflect on the power of a diverse workforce to support a diverse student body, and we'll continue those partnerships through so many ways with our universities, our faith base, and community groups, and even working with our own seniors who become part of future employment for teachers for tomorrow. We also are proud of supporting our new administrators. We have twenty-one new principals and fifty-one new assistant principals since last October, and we know that part of strong leadership in schools begins with the school administrative team, and that school principal is so key. If we go to the next slide on premier workforce, professional learning to support student success, we really work to maximize teacher and leader time with asynchronous and limited synchronous offerings so that our staff can stay in schools. Even though we have a requirement and obligation to provide professional development, some of it is required by state and federal law, and some of it is aligned with our critical, mission-critical goals like pre-K-two literacy, social, emotional, working with students with disabilities, and EL learners, we've worked to do as much as we can to provide that in flexible ways for our staff. We also had a great, great beginning summer institute with eleven hundred new staff attending that. I also want to talk a little bit about professional learning and support of our school leaders with the Equity Symposium that we've done with over fifteen hundred participants. You can see all of the equity work we've done around equity leads and cultural proficiency, and we will continue to work to build our equity muscle so that we can better support our employees in the areas around equity, cultural proficiency, and anti-racism so that our employees can continue to serve our students and community well. I want to also mention resource stewardship, and I want to end the presentation with some updates on that. Our FY twenty-two budget remained focused on student achievement, equity, and social, emotional supports. We gave a two percent increase for all employees, and we did the final year of investing in a three-year plan to enhance IA salaries. We also provided with your leadership bonuses of a thousand dollars for full-time employees and five hundred for non-contracted hourly workers that will be delivered in November of this year. Our budget also includes ESER money from the federal government to provide enhanced summer programming, special ed recovery services, facility upgrades, air quality upgrades, academic and wellness intervention, things like family liaisons, we already mentioned, additional ESOL staffing, school-based monitors to support outdoor cafeteria use, and also supporting principals as they deal with the work around pausing kids and dealing with providing contact tracing materials to the health department. So really, a ton of supports that we've used with those ESER dollars, and we've committed to giving you regular updates around that. I also want you to see our capital improvement work. Construction is underway with one million square feet totaling five hundred and thirty-five million dollars, and we completed this past year about two hundred thousand square feet. We're designing about another million square feet, and we eliminated the need for more than eighty temporary classrooms over the past year. Those all have been prior board goals. Projects underway this year include, these are projects underway this year, include work at Braddock Elementary. There's the beautiful mock-up there. That work still remains in progress. Fox Mill Elementary project for capital improvement underway this year. We also have projects underway at Hybla Valley. Really excited about that. We know they've had a need for a long time with their capacity of students to have additional improvements in that school. We also have Oak Hill Elementary, capital improvement project underway there. Washington Mill also is getting a wonderful upgrade to that capital infrastructure, and you can see as we move from elementary to middle schools, we have some upgrades that we've done. We're working at Cooper Middle School and building additional capacity there. You can see also projects are underway at Frost Middle School, super excited about that, at Hughes Middle School, and that was our middle schools. And now, if you look at our high schools, we are finishing up the last phase of the work of renovating Hernan High School, which reminds me of what it looked like when I first walked in there in nineteen ninety-three, and it's great to see them, like many schools, get the renovation that they deserve. We see enhancements going on at Madison High School, an addition there that's well-needed and well-anticipated and excited by our community to have it, and we are getting close to finishing our complete renovation of Oakton High School. Anybody driving by sixty-sixth West can see that as a work in progress. We also are beginning our project underway at West Potomac High School for its addition to provide additional capacity relief there for students. And I also want to share just some completed projects that were done. We were able to complete this past year Bellevue Elementary, which was a wonderful addition. I got to see that at the very beginning, and it's just a lovely final product. Clearview Elementary and providing additional capacity there, and we were able to add additional modular classrooms in at McLean High School. We really have been through a lot this year. Our challenges have been great, but this system is greater. We are a strong community. We have deeply committed educators and families and students and community partners and board members. We have a passionate community, and we will continue to listen to our community and know that we are, in Fairfax County public schools, greater than the sum of our parts. It's not one individual. It's not one person who comes before you here, not one superintendent, not one teacher, not one principal. It is all of us, and in the middle of this pandemic, we have had to rise to the occasion to serve our students in ways we could have never imagined. We have returned strong in Fairfax County public schools, and we are learning strong. To wrap up, I simply want to say, if we can go to the final slide, a profound thank you. I can't thank all of you, our students, our staff, our families, our board, and this community who partnered with us from the beginning. From the first days of the pandemic, I've asked for grace, not grief, and I still believe in the long run, we have seen evidence in our community far more grace than grief. We have to understand that grief comes in a pandemic because people have felt lost, people have felt anger. We have to understand it, but we have to move beyond it to become a better We have to understand it, but we have to move beyond it to become a better FCPS, a better community. We are all walking forward out of this pandemic. We're excited to have our kids back in our schools, and we will continue to partner shoulder to shoulder with the school board and with our community to have a great school year in Fairfax County public schools. This is the opening, and I can't wait for the rest of the year. Thank you very much, and I'll be glad to take a question or two, or as many as the board chooses to ask.
Well, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And I'll now open it up to any school board members who'd like to go ahead and ask their questions. And we'll start with Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I always appreciate this presentation. It's one of my favorite because it really does reflect where we are at a snapshot in time. You had some very interesting statistics, and I am glad to see that we are continuing to have additional enrollment. I do know that some of our schools have seen significant enrollments just over the past couple of weeks. And so I have a couple of different questions. You talk about 133 vacancies. Can you fill me in on where those vacancies are? I know that we have significant challenges in special ed. Are they all in special ed? Are they in ESOL? Just kind of break out that a bit.
Sure. Let me see what information I have there. Let me get back to that side. Let's see, Sean's not here, just off the top of my head. Let me, let me take a look and see what I have in here on vacancies.
Dr. Braybrand, I am here. I'm sorry.
Oh, Sean, there you are. Very good.
So we do have a mixture of needs across the division in terms of the vacancies. I'm trying to get to my list here on my, my computer, but we do have, our most significant need continues to be the area of special education. But we do have needs in the content areas at the middle and high school level, primarily in the areas of math and science. And then we do have a number of elementary classrooms that are vacant as well.
So high school in math and science, some in elementary school, but where are we at on vacancies in the special ed area?
So, that's what I'm trying to pull up on my computer. I apologize. Our most recent count in special education, the number of vacancies total is 57 and a half, and that's at all three levels.
We recognize, by the way, that we definitely had a special education teacher shortage prior to the pandemic. We have one now in the pandemic, and we are going to have to come up with new strategies to address the special education teacher shortage. I hope to be bringing this board some advocacy around how we can do some additional reform at the state to provide more qualified educators to serve as special education teachers, and look forward to bringing you that very soon.
So in addition to, so about one-third of all of the, or almost half of all of the vacancies are in special ed. And how are we on instructional vacancies for IAs?
Mr. McDonald, would we have that information handy by chance?
I'd actually do, yes. So we currently have just over 40 instructional assistant vacancies at this point.
How many? I'm sorry?
Forty.
Forty? Okay. And is that included in the 133?
It is not. So that count is specifically teacher positions.
Okay. So it's 133, and we have 50, 133 plus 40, so that's 177. Is that about equal to the number of bus driver vacancies as well?
It's, it's approximately in the, in the ballpark. I think we're a little bit fewer in terms of bus driver vacancies at this point.
But it's pretty significant. So we really have to have, I believe, a dialogue with our community on a couple of things. One is the changing structure of our workforce and the importance of addressing that structure. But secondly, it's really important for us to change the tone and tenor of dialogue around the teaching profession and the education profession because the greatest investment we have as a country is the investment in our children. And the only way we can do that investment in our children is to attract the best and brightest into this field. And I would urge, as we continue to have the dialogue, as we come out of this pandemic, that we change the tone to be one which goes back to honoring this most treasured profession. So I really do appreciate your presentation here tonight.
Thank you.
I think that we need to keep coming back to having updates on how we are focusing on the needs of our children. I appreciate the change in some of your focus of this. But what I would like to see in future updates is a, some more targeted updates on how we are going to address some of the more vulnerable students in our population.
Absolutely. And we'll be doing our ESER update, which really will have even better focus on that student academic and social-emotional recovery and acceleration. So absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I appreciate your presentation as always. It's exciting to be, kind of coming into hopefully our own here in FCPS and getting a little more settled with everything that we've been, the turmoil that has been happening. A few questions for you specifically about this report. When, when we talk about the sped vacancies and kind of, you know, what we can do to address this going forward, I'm hopeful that your budget that we will see not terribly long from now is going to have some additions to our talent and acquisition management team. We know that we have even bigger gaps that we have got to fill now. And I think pre-pandemic, we all had these conversations that we needed to have some folks who were able to, to help us with our diversity of our hiring. And also, maybe we need somebody who is particularly sped-focused. So I'm, I'm hopeful. I'm going to give a wink and a nod to Mr. McDonald over there and say, please, 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 we got to beef up the TAM office. There's just no way that, they can do Herculean efforts, but we, we got to be the best and the brightest here to attract these folks in a shortage. The other, and I know you're tired of me talking about it, but is the bus driver. So to piggyback on what Ms. Corbett Sanders said, I think one thing that's really important for us is we, obviously, we're all gung-ho to work on the recruitment bonuses and, but how is it working? What are you seeing? You know, are we actually hiring people? Are we seeing that's not enough? And so what else do we need to change? And then not only are we hiring people, but are we keeping people? You know, we all get some emails left and right from different drivers who are leaving for primarily reasons of plain old salary in the middle of all of this. And so how do we make sure, you know, attract is one thing, but retain is something altogether different. And so I just remain so concerned, and I know that our staff is beyond. I know people who normally are helping manage routes and plan routes or driving buses. I mean, everybody is past maximum capacity, and I know that drives to more people wanting to retire, more people who just cannot sustain what's happening.
Yep.
So what ideas you have to fix it? We would love to hear it.
Well, a couple of things I'll share, and then let Mr. Plattenberg or Mr. Smith share as they'd like. We did rise, we did raise with your support just a few weeks ago, our initial bus driver salary, really now to the highest starting salary really in the region, which is going to be a great opportunity to get even more bus drivers in. And I'll let Jeff talk about any initial impacts he's seen from that. And tonight, as you know, the board has for action, doing a 2.5% raise for all other members of the FCPS transportation family, which is really about a retention strategy of keeping the folks that we have. We need to continue to do that, and we need to continue in small ways too, to show our appreciation for what bus drivers are being asked to do each and every day. Everybody in the system, but everybody especially in transportation, has gone above and beyond their normal job duties. Mr. Plattenberg or Mr. Smith, anything you'd like to add, especially around impacts of the latest training classes that we have coming in?
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand, and I appreciate the conversation. What I can tell you is you have heard time and time again, across the division, from, and the same could be applied for teachers, for leadership team members, cabinet members, the amount of pressure and stress and tension that has been the only constant through every adjustment, every issue, everything that has come before educators who have a passion about serving students and the community, and the challenges of bringing people together to know that we are all working together on behalf of our children. Our drivers have done an incredible job. Our bus drivers, our tenants, the leadership team over there with Francine Ferby, Sherry Dyson, Michelle, and the whole rest of the team over there, Paul DeAndrea, they have done an amazing job with when we started this year, and our drivers were doing doublebacks, our principals were under pressure beyond a normal year, having to go ahead and find out ways to manage and administer and care for children, and parents having to be patient with us and give us the grace that Dr. Braybrand speaks of. While we had some bus rides that were over an hour long, overcrowding on rides, things we have every normal school year, but this year, because of the pandemic, was extraordinary. That compounded with the fact that we had this huge shortage of drivers. I cannot tell you how appreciative I've been and the drivers have been that this body collectively is talking about them, is focused on them as a group. We know we have many challenges, from instructional assistants, from mechanical trades, the shortage of over 260 that I have in the maintenance department and so forth. The only thing I can say is we have totally been looking at revamping. We have made marginal adjustments, to your point, Dr. Braybrand, about the training. We have increased our recruiting efforts with the partnership with HR. We've worked with the Office of Community Relations to go ahead and ramp up. The passage of that hourly wage and the signing bonus and the per diem for late runs has been huge. So we are so appreciative and so thankful. I just wanted to take a minute and, forgive me, Dr. Braybrand, for going on, but letting the board know how appreciative we are with all of the pressures that each and every one of us have been under.
Absolutely. Laura Jane, you asked for specific numbers. I have them. Five to seven applicants a week prior to the bonuses and the salary support, 20 to 50 additional applicants each week since. So yes, this work around pay, this work around bonuses has made a change to our pipeline, and we'll continue to bring you updates around that as we move forward.
All right. So let's make sure, though, that we don't create this pretty amazing farm team then for every other system to pluck off when they get five years in.
No, understood.
You know, and I think, I, I really hope, I don't know how we're going to keep teachers after this year. I'm not going to go after you about live streaming when we're on a different topic today. But, you know, I think what Mr. Plattenberg said, I, I will just echo that whatever we can do, and I know that is a big ask of you, but as we head into budget season, we got to figure out how to keep people, and we got to figure out how we don't grow this number by overtaxing them to that kind of extent. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgmar.
Thank you for this report, Dr. Braybrand. And I, I'll start with the easier topic and then address the elephant in the room. But we talked a little bit about updated curriculum and digital resources. I know we have Schoolology this year. Can you tell us a little bit about how that rollout has gone and summarize what some of those curriculum changes have been?
Sure. Thank you for that, Ms. Kiesgmar. And I'd like our chief academic officer, Dr. Persidio, to talk a little bit about Schoolology. It is replacing Blackboard that we had for many, many years, over 20 years. And now we have Schoolology. And Dr. Persidio, you want to share a few updates around Ms. Kiesgmar's questions?
Sure. Thank you for that question. And I think overall, the rollout has gone pretty well. We did an extensive pilot with a number of schools last year to really prepare and make sure that we understood the, the needs that schools and teachers would have with this full-scale implementation this year. But, you know, honestly, I mean, this year is so challenging in so many different ways for teachers that we definitely understand that this is one more change that they're having to undertake. So we're doing everything that we can to support them and make that transition as smooth as possible. But most of our schools are reporting really positive progress with the implementation, and again, just providing that additional support where it's necessary. The other question you asked was about updated curriculum resources. And we really had a Herculean effort by our central office folks over the summer to rewrite our curriculum, what we call our planning and pacing guides for our core subjects this school year, to make sure that they were aligned with the key information, the essential learning, the essential standards that students needed to have mastered last year that could be reinforced this year, as well as the most important content from this school year. So we provided a lot of additional ready-to-use resources in those curriculum guides, lesson, lesson plans, lesson materials, as well as assessment materials that teachers can use. So I think we did a really good job with that. But again, we're continuing to refine that work based on school feedback. So we're continuing to make adjustments for second quarter, and we'll continue to do that for third and fourth quarter as well.
Thank you. I'd really like to try to clarify what we're talking about so that folks don't have to get too creative. Dr. Braybrand, we have heard a lot of testimony, and I know this isn't in your presentation, about a possible virtual option. I know we, as a board, have talked about this. But just to try to answer some of those folks, I know that there's a teacher shortage. I know that we have limited resources. So can you just talk to us a little bit about what it would mean and what it would take and how difficult or not difficult that might be right now?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to say I have heard the community, and I am working with our OCCR team to reach out to members of the community that have come forward to you today, this evening, and just a few weeks ago, to be able to engage them and talk about their concerns in more detail and see if we can find a way forward. At the same time, I need to be honest as superintendent in this system and share the context of the request for virtual. We simply don't have the staff. We don't even have the staff right now to operate full in-person. We're strained to provide staffing for the limited virtual that we have per CDC guidelines for those with, students with diagnosed medical and health needs. And the systems that are offering virtual that they mentioned have waitlist of thousands of folks or have the positions filled with up to 40 to 50% of substitute teachers, substandard instruction. We have to listen to our medical community to give us guidance in whether school is safe. And resoundingly, at the national, state, and local levels, all the medical guidance continues to say that school can be done safe. Our own data that I have shared just this week is that only, again, .33%, .33%. That's 33 cases out of, I want to make my math right, is out of 1,000. Very, very low percentages of COVID cases in our schools. So it's acknowledging that there are concerns, but showing our data, being transparent with that, and also saying that we don't have the staff and capacity to add and, and offer the high-quality product that we have here in FCPS. But we'll continue to engage with them, and if there are different ideas or new ways that come about as a result of this engagement, that I can bring this board because we want to be solution-oriented. We are hopeful that the good news coming out about the elementary vaccination for kids 5 to 11 will be with us very soon that I can share with our community that so as early as next month, in October, our elementary kids will have access to the vaccine, which I think can be a game changer for education here and across the country. So more to come, and I appreciate that question.
I just wanted to give us an opportunity to respond. I know that people have stated repeatedly tonight, please listen to us. I know that it's not that we're not listening, it's that we have to work with what we have to work with. One more thing, well, two more things I want to ask about, but first, on social and emotional learning, is it too much to, or can we get a synopsis of that? learning, is it too much to, or can we get a synopsis of that? I've heard people from our community take the creative approach to describe what that means, and I thought that perhaps that we could actually define it today.
You know what I think I could do? If we could go back, would it be helpful maybe to go back on one of those slides? We had a slide there that was...
It was page 27.
Yeah. Can we go back to slide 27? Is that possible? Our folks here are going to see if we can get that up. At elementary, and Dr. Persidio, I'm going to do my best, and please overlay, at elementary, one of our core things that we're now doing universally in every slide 27, I believe, at every elementary school is morning meeting. That's where kids in elementary school, they sit in a circle, they introduce each other, they talk about how they're feeling, they unpack their feelings, just like you would unpack facts about history or math, they unpack feelings and learn strategies about how to communicate with one another and explain how they feel. That's morning meeting. At our secondary level, we have got a required advisory period now in every middle or high school. That's where kids have time in a smaller group with the same teacher to be able to get additional help, support, ask questions, and we've provided lesson materials for them to be able to go through, again, age-appropriate, and we're still working on it. We know some of our high school and middle school kids think some of the SCL can still be elevated even more, and among those were even my own two boys who went through the SCL lessons last year. But I will say, even as kids sometimes go, oh, this is touchy-feely, or whatever, I'm too old for this, learning the themes and telling kids, simply like Dr. Brackett told us last year from Yale before the pandemic hit, we need to be sure we're signaling in our system that kids have permission to feel. Morning meeting in elementary, advisory in secondary lets kids know they have permission to feel in our schools, and we're going to continue to grow and learn as we do more and more social, emotional supports and provide the curriculum and get feedback from students. Dr. Persidio, anything you'd add?
Oh, I think that was a great description. I mean, I think the big nugget is, Dr. Braybrand likes to talk about, is we want our students to feel seen and heard and valued and connected to their school community. So that's really what we're trying to do through the morning meeting activities, through the advisory periods. And then, of course, we know that a number of our students have been impacted by the school closures and COVID in different ways, so we definitely are activating our counseling services and our social work services whenever necessary. And when adults really know their students in the classroom, they can help make those connections when students and families need those supports. So that's really, I mean, I think those are the big ideas that we're really focused on.
I appreciate that. I just wanted, for parents to have an opportunity to hear, I know that a lot of folks don't get a chance to come to our work session, so here we are.
Yes, ma'am.
The last set of questions I have, it has to do with premier workforce on page 31, with respect to those hirings and the work that we can do to make sure that we retain people, especially special education, as well as our diverse workforce hires. We know that oftentimes people come into the community and feel as though they're the only ones. So is there, you know, if we can, can we report on those particular retention efforts?
Yeah. Sean, do you want to talk a little bit, or Marty, about some of the work we've done with diverse staff? And we've not only increased more staff of color, we've really gone directly to look at schools that had low or no staff of color and directly had dramatic impacts on that through leadership in Mr. McDonald's office. So Sean, you want to talk a little bit about some of that?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. So from the recruitment perspective, as Dr. Braybrand shared this evening, we did have an increase in the number of teachers of color hired, or the percentage of teachers of color hired this year, which is something we absolutely should be celebrating, but we're not going to stop there. We're going to keep pushing to ensure that we continue to grow the number of folks that are joining our team and helping to support our students. Ultimately, we had been working with a group of schools and continue to work with a group of schools that previously reported that they had no teacher, or no black teachers on their staff. We've made great progress with those schools and continue to now look at widening the growth that we're expecting and being able to support them to do so. And that support really is working with the school leaders around building the culture of inclusion and really promoting an environment where folks are going to feel supported and celebrated and ensuring that they feel that connection and want to continue to be a contributing part of that school community. That is tied directly to that retention component as well. That culture piece is critical in ensuring that individuals within the school community have those connections and supports that they can rely upon, and that does help in ensuring that we're able to retain those individuals. We're also working through the Great Beginnings Program to ensure that we're, as we're bringing new teachers onboard, they have an opportunity to start to form some of those relationships with other teachers that belong to similar affinity groups as themselves and being able to identify with those folks, make those connections, build those collaborative partnerships, and solidify their employment long-term here with the school division. So the work is ongoing, and we are also working with community groups as well in that regard.
Thank you. I understand it's ongoing, and I wanted to highlight particularly two groups, our special education teachers, that we know sometimes it's hard to fill those spots and to make sure we retain, as well as our diverse workforce. And I hope that we're also reaching out to those groups that, where they can join and get information on how best to support these particular teachers that are so, and staff members that are so vital to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I was interested in talking about our students, just pulling up the slide, who've been paused and quarantined. I believe that is slide, it's showing up for me as slide four on the impact. Even though it says August 13th to September 15th, we know that schools started at least a full week later, so even looking at just over a three-week period, we're looking at 3,600 kids between pause or identified as a close contact, and then there was 546 students who were actually COVID-positive. My concern is that 3,600 students, as we talked about on Tuesday, we know that our neighboring jurisdiction, Loudon, is recognizing that with the Delta variant, which symptoms will typically show up sooner, that when we have the students who are getting tested after day five, that by day 10, you're going to have 98 out of 100 of those kids, by day 10, accurately, they're asymptomatic and they don't have COVID and they come back to school. Fairfax County is going to actually extend that by almost another full week, another extra four days. So this is something that's been a big concern, particularly in my district. I can't speak for the other board members in their districts. So I would really like for your team to understand that when families are citing states all around the U.S., including California and Massachusetts, that we really take seriously, what are we doing to help minimize students being out when so much of this board and so much of your commitment as well has been, how do we really reduce learning loss after everything that's happened over the last 18 months?
No, absolutely. We're committed. We're going to continue to review in partnership with the Health Department this quarantine number. We talked a little bit about it on Tuesday, which I think is the slide number you're referring to, just for the wider community. I did present data, our COVID transmission's super low, and I did present a chart with the potential risk being higher if you shorten that quarantine length. It didn't have the Delta variant data on it, we'd love to see it, but that even said about seeing the data, we're going to continue to work with the Health Department, look at the experiences of the districts that are already lowering it, and I commit to working with Dr. Boyd and, of course, Dr. Gloria and the Health Department to review that and make additional recommendations moving forward as we review the data coming in.
And I would say, given tonight's testimony from one of the citizens who happens to reside in my district and is actually a fellow Hoya graduate, he was talking about that specific chart and having concerns about when and where that CDC data where you're talking about the risks of, and it's a massive spread to be saying at 10 days, it could be a 1% to a 10% risk. I mean, 1% is 1%, 10% is totally different.
I'll certainly take those comments and follow up and look at that in more detail with Dr. Boyd and see if we have additional recommendations for the board at a later time.
The other thing is that, as the daughter of a former teacher, I absolutely understand how much they have done throughout the pandemic and just how exhausting their jobs can be, but what I don't understand is why or what did they share on the problem of live streaming versus recording, because I think it's a very different experience for students, particularly at the elementary school level.
You know, I'll try to bring back additional feedback on that. We're just getting ready to start our stream-in, check-in process that will be going into effect next Monday, and I can bring back some of that focus to you as we go through that with our schools. We are continuing to work to refine all those processes as we begin it next week, and we've stayed in close collaboration, Dr. Persidio and I. We're meeting with principals today, we're meeting with teachers today, we're continuing to get additional feedback, look at things that we can help refine to make this easier because we know it's a lift. But we'll also try to drill down a little bit more on the live streaming versus pre-recording and bring you some additional information on that, one of our future updates.
Yeah. I can't emphasize enough that our students are just so desperate to continue their learning.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Denard-Cofax.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Some of this you will have heard from me at the work session, but well, first of all, I do want to highlight, there are lots of good things in this presentation, and Fairfax County needs to and continues to be one of the best school systems in the nation. We are challenged like we have never been challenged before. We must adhere to audiences that believe masks are unnecessary to those that want virtual learning, and we are trying to do our best in all of these circumstances. So I thank you, I thank the staff, I thank all of our principals and teachers who are navigating through these waters, which we thought were almost done in the spring, but here we are again. So in our work session, I mentioned to you that I continue to have a lot of cases in my area that where students, of course, were not contacted in the 24 to 48 hours. On average, I was hearing eight to 14 days in my area. I know you're aware of that. I want the public to understand that we hear you, we are, and you had committed that you will be working and meeting with our county health partners. You've already started doing that, but you will be working with them, you will be meeting with them, and, but, Dr. Braybrand, I ask you to make our county health partners understand what this is, what these pauses that have not been followed up on in a fashion as promised have done to our students and how they have impacted our students as well as our teachers and administrators.
No, thank you. I know the urgency, we have heard loud and clear the urgency of parents with kids paused and quarantined, need, and those that could have the opportunity to come back sooner. We must address that and give them communication based on the medical advice. So we've sped up the process at secondary for the vaccination card if they're asymptomatic. We've sped up the information we're giving them so that they can do contact tracing quicker, and we hope to have better results to share than what I had to share on Tuesday where we saw that those cases were still beyond the 48 to 72 hours that the Health Department has worked to do ago. But they are working too, to speed up their process, and I hope to have better news to report when we next meet.
Yes, thank you. Because I am working with our schools and getting this information, I am also, my time is up? Okay, just last thing.
Yes, please go ahead.
I did not hear that. I really think, because, as I was saying, because I've been talking to the administrators, I am hopeful that, and I spoke to you about this earlier today, I am really hopeful we can come up with something to support the mental health needs of those that are in the buildings on the front lines. This is extremely important. They are, you know, the hashtag not sustainable applies to them as well as everybody else in the building, so.
Absolutely. And we are meeting, and we spoke to principals just today, that help is on the way for additional supports for them as school leaders. They need that because they're trying to fill the tanks of others when their own tank is approaching empty. And to be honest, everyone in America needs to understand that our educators are all trying to serve kids in the most unbelievable set of circumstances I think anyone could have imagined. You couldn't have written a more challenging chapter of the last 18 months, and it's a testament that so many people who love kids so much are staying connected. I'm hopeful that very, very soon, we are going to have the vaccine for every kid and really be able to extinguish the Delta variant completely, and we're going to do everything we can to support our leaders, to support our teachers and frontline workers.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I just want to quickly echo what Ms. Denard-Cofax shared, which is, there's a lot here to celebrate, so I do want to be sure that we're not losing track of that, but I do know that in the effort of continuous improvement, we do want to just kind of hone in on the areas that we do need to have some different results. Very quickly, I'm just going to start on page three. I know on page three you shared information about the National Merit semifinalists, and I know that the information for this year has just been made public, and I know there's been a slight increase, but I have to share my concern in terms of how none of the schools, none of the students who are semifinalists are from schools that are represented in Mason District, not one of the high schools. So that message is troubling to me, and I would love to hear your thoughts in terms of, since equity is at the center of all of our work, how we can have greater parity in this kind of honor for students all across the division.
Yeah. One thing I would say is, I think we need to continue to look at how we can support kids. We offer, the National Merit Scholarship is determined by the PSAT score that is taken in 10th grade, and we offer that universally. The leadership of Dr. Dominich almost 20 years ago put in that at 10th grade. I believe, Dr. Persidio, do we do some work at 9th grade even with PSAT, or is it only at the 10th grade level, before I say something?
It's universal at the 10th grade level.
It's universal at 10th. We may need to do some more targeted work around that at the 9th grade level for those schools that were not seeing the same success, and I'll talk with Dr. Persidio about maybe some opportunities that we can do that more. I will say, I've learned personally, even through the journey as a parent, that the PSAT can open gateways for kids to have opportunities for scholarships, for colleges to see them, to understand them, and I'll bring back some ideas at a future meeting.
Thank you. I do remember seeing your son's name on this list last year, because I sent you a note, and the fact that your cognizance of the doors that it opens, and again, my just dismay that zero of the high schools at Mason District are represented.
Understood.
It just speaks to the continuing narrative that our kids are not performing as well as others in the division, and I really think some targeted efforts to change that is key, can't overdo.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Secondarily, I wanted to speak about lunches. You have lots here in terms of how many meals have been served. That's great news, because I do know our folks do use it in our community. Have there been some impacts to the quality of the lunches based on supply chain issues and matters?
I'm going to let Ms. Burden speak to that. I think we have had a few supply chain challenges, and we've had to double down on some of our oldies but goodies like pizza, which maybe doesn't make students upset, but we want to continue to fully implement the food and nutrition health guidelines, but... the food and nutrition health guidelines. But Ms. Burden, do you want to share a little bit more there?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. We are experiencing some supply chain shortages in food due to the greater participation of students. As Dr. Braybrand said, we're serving on average about 28,000 more students per day than we were pre-COVID, for a total of 138,000 compared to 110,000 pre-COVID on average. And so that participation volume increase, you know, is being experienced all across the United States. And as a result of that, we have supply shortages for, you know, some food items. Delivery drivers are also in short supply. That can impact food services. But as far as the quality of food, I do not believe that it is affecting the quality of food. It is affecting the number of options that we are able to provide. Typically, we do provide a number of choices for students every day, and that has been limited somewhat during this school year because of supply shortages.
Can you give a little bit more specificity? Are we talking about five options that have been now down to two options or three? Just roughly, because I do have some community members that are just concerned with the offerings.
My understanding is we have, that we usually have four or five options at the secondary level, and we usually have just two or three options at the elementary level at this time. And usually, you know, pre-COVID, it was, we had a much greater selection than that.
We can get you some additional information on where the menu has gone. And it has been shortened some because of supply chain, and we can let you know which those are. Pizza is still available in Fairfax County Public Schools, though. I wanted to share that tonight for students who are watching.
I had it at code not too long ago when I visited. As somebody who ate lunch in the cafeterias every day, it's hard to get out of that habit. But thank you for that information. I think knowing that we do have some supply issues will provide our parents to understand a little bit better in terms of the shortages. Lastly, I just want to say very quickly, Schoology, I know it's new and has been a little bit of a learning curve for our parents and our staff. But as someone who engaged in seven different classrooms during my child's back-to-school night, it was a nice one-stop shop where you had to go to Schoology. Everything was there, syllabus, the Zoom button. So thank you for that transition. I think it's been streamlined tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch.
Thank you very much. First question on technology. I think it's great that we have devices in everybody's hands now. Is, I can't see, is Marty here? He's here, okay. And I'm sure you can guess what I'm about to ask. But I'm curious if we will be able to roll out the monitoring capabilities for parents to see screen time data for their students that we approved last year. Mr. Smith?
So I will also let Mr. Sethi have some comments on this. I know that our teams are working in so many different areas to ensure that our students are returning to school strong. And so that is clearly a priority for the board and is on our priority list. And we will be providing some information to the board about what our options are. But I can say that with what we have going on at this point, we've been more focused on ensuring that we are, again, returning students strong. But we will be bringing some information back to the board about our progress and where we are with implementing that work.
Is the same hold true for the other follow-on motion that was passed last year to make sure that our devices are being used to supplement, enrich classroom experience as opposed to just being the technological paperweight?
Yes, and that is a work that we would be doing and working with ISD to do that work. And again, those same teams are involved in ensuring that we are supporting the work of returning students to school. And so it is a bit of a domino effect there, but those are still priorities for our departments.
And I don't want the public to get the wrong idea that I'm not conscious of the hard work that they're doing. But I continue to raise the issue because at one point, we were told that it was going to be implemented in the short term. And it was during the pandemic that that was said. So also on the question of technology, are we noticing savings on MiFi devices in the coming year compared to the big expense that we put into it last year? And are we pushing families toward Cox still, or is it more MiFi-centric?
I know that we are providing a variety of options for families beyond just our Cox offerings. But I will ask Mr. Sethi to provide a little more information about what's happening with MiFi's in general.
Thank you, Marty. To the question of MiFi's, we, during the summer season, plan to keep the same amount of MiFi's in rotation, just not anticipating, trying to anticipate all the demand. So currently, we have the same load of MiFi's for this school year, but clearly, the use is shifting as students come back into the building, and we'll be able to reduce that in the coming year depending on the spike in demand or the reduction of it. To the question of student use, we have, I think I was just going to go back to the quick question on the technology for using and monitoring student network. We piloted a solution through the last year, and the team is just about ready to roll it out on a larger scale. We want to be prepared for the parent support questions that come along with it and allow for a rollout to help parents sign on for that strategy. We will come back with details on that.
Thank you. Shifting a little bit to social-emotional learning, we've made a lot of progress over the last year looking out for our LGBTQIA students. Tremendous progress.
Tremendous.
I would say, leading the Commonwealth. And I'm curious, and you can rope in others to answer as well, how you see our SEL, Universal Practices benefiting our LGBTQIA students in the year ahead?
Well, here's what's great. We are doing this screener universally, grades three through 12. We talked about whether to pilot it, but we said in this post-pandemic or emerging from the pandemic, we need to dipstick every kid. We're going to be able to really drill down and give that kind of data that you're looking at to see, how are our kids doing by grade level? And I don't know yet, maybe Dr. Boyd or Dr. Persidio, what our full data capabilities will be. But I do think it's going to let us pinpoint much more specifically how students are doing, how unique groups of students are doing, and we can make the appropriate adjustments. I do think we've led the way in Virginia around our transgender work, both regulations, but also creating a culture of affirmation. The AAA network starts with affirming. And the more that we affirm our kids from all backgrounds about who they are, the more successful they're going to be. But as far as the data piece on the SELs, anything, Dr. Persidio, that you would add to that?
I don't think I would add anything at this time. I mean, I think you answered that.
All right, thank you. No, thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Lots to be proud of here in Fairfax County Public Schools. And I think sometimes we lose sight of that when we're hunkered down dealing with all of our issues with COVID, et cetera. So thank you for the presentation. I did, I'm happy to follow some of my colleagues, and so I do want to bolster some of their remarks. You know, we've had discussions too that are very interested in really tracking, what's the appropriate amount of quarantine time? And how do we, you know, take care of the pauses and make sure we're working more closely with the Health Department? You know, my office has been tracking that information for school districts across the country. We added some international information today, so you all have the spreadsheet to take a look at.
Oh, thank you.
It's, you know, a lot of data. I do want to just ask a couple of questions about the SEL work. You know, I know we're doing a lot this year, and we have significant investments in that area. And I just wondered, I know that's a very difficult area to sort of have a lot of data around. Is it working? What do we do next year? I know, you know, we're looking at using ESSER funds for this, and the, you know, the numbers are big. So how are we going to really track it and make sure that what we're doing is working?
Yep.
And if we need to make adjustments?
Dr. Boyd or Dr. Persidio? But I know we have a firm plan around how we're going to assess kids and then do follow-up based on that assessment. Should I go to Dr. Boyd first, Dr. Persidio, or?
Well, I see her hands up, so let's go to Dr. Boyd.
Dr. Boyd?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and thank you for the question. We will be having the capability, as Dr. Braybrand shared, to have data from our SEL screener. And the key piece is that we are focusing on certain strands. So as we talk about SEL, I just want to highlight that we're talking about self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills, and social awareness. So with that data and with that information, we'll be able to establish goals as one of the data points being the screener. But the benefits of social-emotional learning, that should have a positive impact on our student attendance. It should have a positive impact on our student discipline, and most importantly, a positive impact on our student achievement. And so we will be able to establish goals, have baseline data, and to monitor the interventions that are implemented to ensure that we are making progress. And as with all things, the goals and the strategies that are implemented at one school may be different than those implemented at another school based on that school's unique needs. But we'll be monitoring that closely and supporting our administrators and our staff in that way.
So I also know an important part of the screeners is follow-up with students that are identified in those screeners to have any issues. Dr. Braybrand, you and I had a conversation about this. I had with some of my administrators. They really need to make, we need to make sure they have time to do the follow-up that they need to do after these screeners. So we need to really be careful about our testing times and our follow-up times.
Yeah, thank you. Some of the principals are telling me, Scott, as we work on this, can we have a little bit more time between the assessment and the follow-up? And it's a lot of kids, right? We're not just doing this for a few kids. We're not just doing this in a few grades. So we're certainly going to take that feedback and try to make the adjustment so that it's paced, that the cadence of the assessment and then the follow-up is just right. I think we all also just feel this overwhelming need to really make sure we've checked in with every kid in these areas and make sure that we're really going to meet their needs. And their needs aren't going to be just through this school year. We're really going to be having to develop plans for kids for the rest of this year, but even beyond. And that's why our ESSER approach has really been, this is not just a one-year SEL project. This is about frankly, I think this is going to be one of the more permanent things that comes out, that we're going to have a more intentional approach to social-emotional learning in schools, and it's going to stay with us even beyond the pandemic. But we'll certainly bring some more updates, and I will have flexibility working with the principals on both the assessment and follow-up timelines.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Maron?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. It's nice to hear about things that are not fully COVID-related all the time.
Yes, that's right.
However, I'm going to talk about COVID-related things.
Okay, well, that's okay too.
I've had the good, well, I've been talking for many weeks now, as you know, with different families and who have experienced the pausing and the quarantining. And I know our team has done a ton of work to try and make those be more seamless. And I think one thing that I've learned is that we are being tasked, the school division is being tasked with really stepping up in ways never seen before in terms of public health. And I know you and your staff have been involved with meetings to plan for things that on a massive scale that we haven't seen. For instance, the upcoming vaccine that will be rolling out. Can you just speak about the different community members, stakeholders, partners that you've been engaged with to plan for that? And just to
Sure.
share the expansiveness that we have 87,639 FCPs students who will be age-eligible for the new vaccine out of the 96,000 children in Fairfax County. So please, yeah, do share about your conversations and work.
I'll be honest, let's be clear. We have a tremendous lift in front of us to get ready to vaccinate these thousands of kids. I have convened already, working with the Health Department already, our partners, with Dr. Boyd, our assistant superintendent, who has responsibility for school-related health services, and also with Inova, and also with our Virginia Academy of Pediatricians. We know our pediatricians are feeling concerned about being overwhelmed as this vaccine becomes available. They're already overwhelmed in their offices. We know Inova is sharing strains. But the truth is, we are going to have to partner together with community partners, with our Health Department, with Inova, with our pediatricians, and come out with a way that we can all successfully get our community of elementary school kids vaccinated. Dr. Boyd is about to launch a survey that we will be doing. And Dr. Boyd, do you want to talk a little bit about that? And then our plans to use that survey to help bring and convene. We're meeting with these groups already, started to meet with this group. We'll expand the group as needed, and we're meeting every two weeks. But we're going to use that survey, Dr. Boyd, going out very soon to parents to help guide us through this next, and what I hope is our final vaccination phase for kids. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. As Dr. Braybrand shared, we will be partnering with our Health Department to support the vaccination efforts for our students ages five to 11. We know that there's going to be a significant community outlet to support the vaccination of our youngest learners in this way. And we know that a number of our families will take access and advantage of those community outlets. But we also know that we will have some families that may need support in accessing the vaccine. And we want to survey those families to see how we can best support them. As with all things, we don't want to assume we know how to meet our families' needs. We want to ask our families what their needs are so that we can collaborate with our county partners and determine how we can be responsive to those specific needs. So we'll be submitting a survey to determine how many of our families will be interested in having their students vaccinated during the school day in their absence? How many of our families would prefer to have, participate in community vaccination efforts where they can be present with their children? And how many of their families would want to and would prefer to have their young ones be vaccinated with their primary medical home? So that survey will be forthcoming. And again, the purpose of that survey is to inform how we can collaboratively work to support our students and families.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. And the, is the school division going to be contracting to have the vaccines through our own provider? Do you know? Is that part of the contracting for the COVID testing?
We are looking at a vendor to support us with both student testing and staff testing, and with student and staff vaccination. And I don't know, Mr. Smith, do we have an update yet on that? Or we hope to have some real updates in finalizing that vendor selection very, very soon. Mr. Smith?
Yes, we're in the process now of working with our vendor and going through the process of developing, we've developed questions and having the vendor answer those questions for us as we move forward. But yes, we are looking at primarily with the testing aspect and then also with the vaccination aspect. And again, the current vendor in which we're speaking, we'll be able to provide both of those options for our community.
Thank you. I mean, I have to say, I'm just floored that this is the work that our public school system is being tasked with doing. I think we're rising to the challenge. But when I look, I'm looking at our mission right now, to inspire and empower students to meet high academic standards, lead healthy, ethical lives, and be responsible and innovative global citizens. It's tough to do that when we are giving medicine to children with family's consent, of course, testing, finding vendors to do these things. It really, you know, earlier this year, I had expressed concern about the weight of things on our shoulders at that time. And this has just compounded everything, and I think it's unreasonable on us. So I thank us, I thank the staff rather, for what they're doing. And to that end, I think that it is time that we have an appointed staff person who really can manage this. Our central office staff have done yeoman's work in juggling this with special education and the Department of Support Services in addition to other programs. And it's not sustainable. And I only hope that we can continue with the partnerships you mentioned, Dr. Braybrand, to really, we need, you know, lots of help. Also, we can look to other partners perhaps we haven't connected with yet, the Nova Chamber of Commerce, libraries, the Office for Children at the county. Could Inova lend us and support the Bloodmobile units dispensing mobile vaccine? units dispensing mobile vaccination? You know, when I think of, it took, I know about weeks, it was amazing when I walked into that center back in January and saw, you know, eighty-some-odd station set up. If it took weeks to vaccinate about, you know, 20,000 of our staff, how are we going to do it with 100,000 kids in the coming months?
That's right.
That is my big concern and my ask of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Omech?
Thank you. Thank you to our staff. As everyone has articulated, it's been a tremendous effort, obviously, over the course of just the past few weeks in being able to return to normal. I did, well, almost, almost completely. I did have obviously a number of questions. Dr. Braybrand, I want to give you the opportunity right now to share with our community, being realistic as we look ahead, whether it's staffing, whether it's, you know, instructional needs, whether it's the safety situation we're in, the health situation. What is realistic to expect looking ahead, and what challenges do we believe, you know, may disappoint perhaps, just to set community expectations?
Generally speaking, I'd say, I think we've come to the realization after six weeks that COVID will still be a primary impact on this school year in a way that we had hoped it would not be. I think it will be better by the end of the year, but it will still have a significant impact on our operations through the rest of this year. We need to continue to look at what things we can do with the additional health responsibilities that we've placed on our staff. What else can we take away from them while maintaining a focus on instruction? And right now, the strain, the concern that you guys hear is teachers and principals who want to be instructional leaders who are having to be medical and operational support staff so that we can simply keep the operation running. That's the biggest challenge. I don't think it's going to go away, certainly not during this fall. I hope as we enter the end of the calendar year and into 2022 with vaccination prevalent for elementary, we'll have less operational issues and more opportunity to return to instructional ones. But COVID will still end up having more of an impact this year than we ever expected, and it will still, the year will be, certainly, the first six months of this year will still be dominated by COVID-19 in our schools, and that's just the truth.
Yeah, just wanted to be loud and clear that it's certainly going in the right direction, but it's not over.
It's not over yet.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I wanted to dig a little bit into some of the academic pieces that you shared with us, slides two and three, just as a snapshot of what's going on, and then slide nine on family engagement. If you can share a little bit on how those compare to previous years?
Well, sure. I'm just going to go back to the slides as you reference them. In terms of slides two and three, slide two, where we were just talking about demographics, our enrollment this year over last year is about the same. We wanted to capture, we wanted to capture that projected enrollment that was really done pre-COVID, and we've not gotten back those, those folks just simply haven't come that we projected would have come. Some of that trim is back in the early grades. Some of it, again, we can see that early grades are down below the projections, and we also see that homeschool is up. So I do hope that homeschool numbers are going to, again, based on what principals are being told, families are saying, "When I can get the vaccine, I am going to enroll my kid immediately in FCPs." So we hope to have different numbers, and we'll have updated special ed numbers, not in September, but in December is when we have the final special ed count. So we may see some additional movement then. The graduation rate is one of the big stories here. One, I think it talks about when you get additional flexibility from the state beyond just the SOLs to measure a kid's success, we can get more kids to walk across that graduation stage. And we've done it across all kinds of demographic groups, are English-language, are economically disadvantaged, are Latino. And this board put direct resources in schools that were underperforming on graduation rate, graduation counselors and coaches, to make sure those kids knew what credits they needed and they were getting them done, or they were going to summer school. And we ran summer school three times, the 66% larger, and that's got more kids across, too. So I'm very proud of this 95%, almost 95% graduation rate. It's thousands of more kids graduating now than just a few years ago, but we still have more to go until we're really, every child by name and by need means this still has room for improvement. And those are, I guess, the things that I would say I'm most proud of there in terms of academics. And as I told you and shared earlier, I'm proud that we've really continued movement around a diverse workforce to reflect our diverse student body. And what Sean and his team have done, Dean Brooks, we need to keep doing. And I think that will change our culture and climate, too. As we bring more diversity into our school, there will, there will be, I think, greater learning opportunities for kids and staff alike.
Yeah, family engagement was the other piece, Dr. Braybrand. Slide nine.
The family engagement, the bottom line out of the family engagement, we dip-stick twice last year, in the fall and winter and December, and then in the spring, and our numbers moved in the right direction. Families see more focused outreach, but let's be honest, as you've said for some time, our historical work on this, we have fallen short. But we've acknowledged it, and we're doing more now, more language translation, more specific outreach with all of our material in multiple languages, the technology helpline, the family liaisons, and 31 schools, Ms. Omech, that they weren't in before, right? If this is important, it needs to be important in every school, not just in some schools. So we're moving, we moved it from parent to family. We're broadening the sense of responsibility for what that is. It's not a simple translation job. It's about family engagement involvement. And we recognize when we did the new family engagement policy just a few years ago with the prior board, that we were going too narrow. Language only is not what it's all about. It's about inclusiveness, it's about respect, it's about continued communication. I can speak to you in your language and still be rude and still be exclusive. So language in and of itself was not enough, and we've, we've changed the training, we've changed the mission, and we've added more. And we've not only added more and more schools, schools with existing family liaisons have gotten additional hours to directly let those family liaisons spend more time supporting them. So I hope to see this engagement number continue to creep up in the year ahead.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think especially as we compare it to previous years, making sure we're constantly-
Yes.
Steadily moving up.
Improvement.
Yeah, even in a tough year. So I appreciate you outlining some of that. Can't know if we're getting better, if we, you know, don't know what that's relative to.
Yep.
On slide 18, I did want to dig a little bit into the accreditation piece. I know, you know, some of the state requirements have laxed a little bit, giving us some room. At the same time, though, in the future, we're going to be tested on that based on the SOL data, right?
That's right.
So what are we doing to kind of prepare to make sure that we're not stagnating in that sense, or falling even behind since we're not accountable in the same way this year?
Yeah. Well, let me go back on one thing, too, about family engagement, about improvement. It's important to recognize that it's just been during this last two or three years that we did the first-ever family engagement survey. So we, we've made a sea change to say that family engagement needs to be assessed, needs to be measured, needs to have resources responded to. We had not done that. We've talked about it, but we've never surveyed it. And unless you inspect it, you won't be respecting it. So I think we're going to see success, but we don't have a long trend line. We just started to dip-stick this just before the pandemic. As far as the accreditation purposes, Dr. Presidio, do you want to say anything about that? I know our schools are hard at work doing this initial assessment. And I, the only thing I'd add before I turn it over is, I think our teachers are excited for once, for the first time in Virginia, to be able to be measured on growth over time versus one moment in time in the spring. It is more assessment time during the school year, but the focus on growth really gives a chance to say, where do we take a student from instead of just a moment in time? But Dr. Presidio, anything else you'd add?
Well, I would add a couple things. One, it's still a little bit unclear exactly how the accreditation process is going to work, because this is the first time, as Dr. Braybrand mentioned, that this growth assessment is being administered. So, you know, our schools are in the process of administering it right now. So we're still learning about what that's going to look like and how the state is going to calculate those results. So we're in close communication with the Virginia Department of Education on that. But more importantly, I would say to your question, we've been very proactive in supporting our schools based on the other data indicators that we had from last year, as well as entry assessments that we gave to students as they returned this school year. So all of our schools are using the MTSS process to identify those students that do have the greatest academic needs, and we're deploying our central office staff to support the schools that have the greatest percentages of students that might be in academic jeopardy. So our Department of School Improvement and Support are in schools every day based on those needs that have been identified in our schools. So we're being very proactive. We're looking, again, at how the state is going to develop the accreditation ratings. And we'll have more information to report to the board. As part of our academic and wellness plans, using our ESSER funds, we've committed to providing ongoing progress monitoring reports to the school board. So we will have more of those reports even before we get to the accreditation phase that will give you some sense about where we're at.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And building off of that, I know one of the cornerstones, the three kind of main pieces here were assess is one of them, right? And you outlined that you want to listen to students and respond to their needs. So I'm wondering, not just when it gets really bad with the accreditation risk, right, but in general, if you can just speak a little bit more to how we're evaluating that, because we know the gaps are, have increased, are going to continue to increase. So what's that assessing and modifying process look like?
Well, Dr. Presidio, would, do you want to add anything to that? I have some comments I'd make.
Will it be in real time? I mean, I don't know. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, one of the things I'd say is, we need to continue to remember that we have professional learning communities in our school with our teachers who are regularly designing lessons, assessing kids, using the feedback from those assessments to drive further interventions or refinements to instruction. And it's a, it's what we call a professional learning community cycle. It's part of our theory of action. You may hear a lot in elementary school about, "Oh, my God, I've got this many CLT meetings each week." But that's part of a central part of our strategy, that teachers need to come together, look at what they taught, look at what kids' results are. And so they're doing that. They're doing that real time. It's just part of the nature of work each day, and it's reflected, we've given, ISD has given them some material to do, short, quicker form of assessments to help see where kids are. I think some of it is going to emerge here in the next few months, how deep the gap is, but also how quickly kids are accelerating now that they're back, right? One is what the gap was, but two is how quick the growth rate will be. And we're just six weeks in, it's just a little too early to be able to speak definitively to that. And I don't know, Dr. Presidio, anything else that you would say over what I shared?
No, I mean, I think, again, you know, schools are in the process of building out their ESSER plans. So now that, you know, the state has approved the ESSER grant that we submitted, those funds will start being distributed to schools, and they'll start to put those academic supports in place, and we'll be able to have a better understanding about, you know, how well students are responding to those supports that they have in place. I guess the one thing I might just elevate a little bit is, we definitely need to be looking at some of these standardized assessments like the SOLs, but those aren't the only types of assessments. I mean, we definitely want to be looking at a more holistic approach to assessment. We want to value what students can do as they come back. We want to keep them engaged in the learning process, and we want to provide them with additional supports that are also rigorous, enriching, and engaging at the same time. And trying to strike that balance is going to be really important as we move forward in supporting our students.
Yeah, absolutely. I think I want to emphasize specifically that identification piece in, you know, in advance, right? Because we know that once those gaps exist and we don't notice them, maybe over time it gets worse. By the time we've seen the evaluation process, which to your point, Dr. Presidio, isn't necessarily even clear how it's going to happen yet, you know, then we find ourselves way behind and could have intervened far earlier. So that's, I wanted to emphasize that piece, in real time, finding those gaps and needs. I want to pivot a little bit just to the budget part with the foundation specifically, whether we've seen, you know, how that's compared to things in the past, and then also what our budget and needs evaluation process will look like as we look at the last portion of ESSER.
So a couple of things there. In terms of budget priorities, you all are going to be talking about budget priorities for next year's budget very, very soon. ESSER, as you know, you prioritize school-based funds for academic and social-emotional supports. One thing also, if I could go back, Ms. Omech, that's important, that I'm coming to the realization of, and many of our colleagues are, too, whatever gap that the kid has is not going to be, the gap isn't going to shrink in a quarter. It's, the first report isn't going to tell you, we, yep, we already closed the gap, or the January one. We hope to make progress, but I need to be sober-minded in sharing with you that I'm tentatively here in the beginning, that the gaps that there are are going to require a lot of hard work on behalf of the staff and the students to close those. And it may not all happen in one year. I wish that it would, but it may not. Does it mean, and it's not an excuse because we need to be seeing ourselves do better, but at the very beginning, we may not see as big the gains. It may not be a simple and a quick fix of just tying back with teachers. It's really going to have to be trying to accelerate through content in a way that we just haven't had students do before. So we'll, we'll keep you posted. I will keep you posted in this board.
If you could just answer the foundation part.
About what part?
How things have, what, how the foundation funds compare to previous years?
Oh, the foundation, oh, the foundation, that's about, about the same. Actually, the foundation would tell you, and I'll work to get a report, that our funds, our business community stepped up. We did not see a dramatic decrease. Ms. Cohen, I know, was on our foundation board, and we did not see a dramatic decrease at all. In fact, we saw funders step up and support us really at levels, I think even a bit higher than prior to the pandemic. And I think the foundation will have a lot of exciting news to be sharing soon with this board and the greater Fairfax community beyond what all the great work they've done already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seizmehizer.
I will try to be brief because many of my questions and thoughts have already been discussed or brought up by my colleagues. First, I just wanted to say, Dr. Braybrand, and to your team, and I have to give a shout out to Dr. Boyd, who, I don't know if she's still here online, but I know how incredibly hard you all have been working, but especially Dr. Boyd, in helping to manage many of the changes and adaptations we've had to make due to Delta and the realities of COVID that we were hoping wouldn't be the realities of COVID this fall. So I just wanted to give a shout out to your team, and especially to our principals and our teachers who are working above and beyond. I, you know, my heart goes out to the hard work they're doing, and I hope they know how incredibly grateful we are and how much it means to us that they're doing this for our kids. Having said that, I wanted to ask, I am thrilled that we're trying to do more for our kids who are paused and quarantined. I wanted to ask what we're doing for our teachers to help them, especially with those office hours, which you know, I believe very strongly in because our kids need that connection. What can we take off their plates? Can we compensate them? What can we do to help?
So we are in the middle of having some dialogue about how we can do some additional targeted compensation for those teachers who are going to have a larger number of kids, any teacher that has kids that are paused, quarantined, or isolated, that requires time to work beyond contract hours. So we are working on that right now about what additional flexibilities we can give principals for the use of those targeted funds to support those interventions. So we'll, we'll have more to share, I think, very soon, but we recognize, even if we can't change, and we all want to provide the support, how can we try to compensate that to the greatest degree possible? The other thing is just continuing to talk about what works and refining what can be done. Can you talk to a group of kids all at once, and that counts as a collective check-in for everyone? Yes. Does a check-in have to be 30 minutes? No. Depending on the group of students and the individual student, that check-in could be super brief, really a five-minute or 10-minute check-in. Do you understand the assignments I got? Are you clear with what to do? Do you need any help? Some will need more. It's going to vary by age and ability of the kid, and we need to provide, and we're going to work to provide even more refined guidelines so teachers understand it's about meeting those kids where they are. I do want to say why this is so important. We've already got some kids entering their second quarantine. 28 days without a teacher or instruction is not something we can do either. We have to have both the parent hat, the teacher hat, the administrator hat, but we are looking with refined guidelines in addition- are looking with refined guidelines, in additional compensation supports where we can for, for this work.
And I, I'm so glad to hear that, Dr. Brabran. And I really do appreciate also that you brought up the fact that this isn't just a, you know, out of school one time and like it was pre-COVID, or a kid may be sick and coming back. This is maybe more than once, especially until we get the vaccinations for our younger kids. And it's really important after this last year to have them connected and have that sense of belonging and alive or a person, not just asynchronous work. It's vital, I think, to their long-term success. So, I really appreciate the flexibility for our teachers, but also the opportunity for our students.
Thank you.
I wanted to bring up, you know, I'm so glad to see the higher graduation rate, and I think it goes to your point of showing that the importance of flexibility in demonstrating competency for graduation, and I think it's something that we should push for, for the state, to make sure that we're not artificially holding back students who are capable of demonstrating the knowledge for graduation to graduate. I did want to mention that I know that accreditation is, you know, being waived for one more year, but our requirements for our high school students, there's less and less waivers for graduation. So, I want to make sure that for our high school students who ninth, 10th, 11th grade, part of that time was their year in virtual, that it's not long-term going to impact them negatively.
So, I think something this board should think about when you talk about legislative priorities, one of the silver linings of the pandemic was greater state flexibility, and it needs to be retained beyond the pandemic. What we learned is kids in FCPS classrooms held to high standards can go beyond a standardized test and walk across the stage with their peers. Kids that before had a standardized test, and this board has been clear, and I've been clear, that standardized tests have been often barriers to admission or barriers to learning versus accelerating and igniting learning and passion in kids. The flexibility, targeted flexibility that the state has given us is something that needs to come out of this pandemic, including around locally verified. Let local groups of educators review the kids' work and make a determination about whether they are ready to have a credit verified for that particular course so that they can move forward for graduation.
And I think that's the key, right? It's not that we don't expect the high expectations for our students, but there's flexibility in, in local control of how we make sure our students are demonstrating that they've passed those high expectations. And I think that makes sure we know we're graduating our students with the knowledge we should graduate without having an artificial barrier of a standardized test in their way. So, I appreciate that feedback. I would just like to say that as you're looking at this on-time graduation rate and looking at special education students, make sure you pull out that applied studies diploma in that on-time graduation rate and don't include it there. You know, I was going to say that.
You've asked that for two years. Okay, yeah.
I'll keep saying that. Thank you.
No, I don't, I don't think it's been released. The state detail hasn't been released, released yet, but we'll be sure when we release it that we have that breakout as you've requested before.
Yeah, just, just because they're a very, very different base, the applied studies and standard or advanced diplomas, and they lead to different capabilities in terms of post-secondary and jobs. So, it's not an apples-to-apples number if those are combined into one. So, I just wanted to put that out there proactively this year. So, thank you very much. And again, thank you for your team, our principals, our admins, everybody for all their hard work, and our bus drivers, our staff. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just share. I think, you know, last year was a horrible year due to a worldwide pandemic that unfortunately just won't let go. But there's so many great things happening, and I think, you know, we have to say that. You've shared many of these tonight. I want the community to hear that, and for those of us who are going into schools and seeing them and talking to the teachers, kids are learning, kids are engaged, teachers are happy to be with their students. Everybody is working overtime and doing everything they can to get kids back into in-person learning and re-engaged and, and starting to close those gaps. And I think it's important that we just say that and ensure that we keep telling people that. And at the same time, you know, as some of my colleagues brought up, there are still lots of areas of concern, and I appreciate Ms. Marin, who brought up the vaccinations. I mean, that is the next big hurdle for this school system, for this county, and I, I am very interested in seeing what plans you're going to bring us, Dr. Brabran, to address that. Very quickly, can somebody talk about the K2, K2 devices? What did we end up doing for our youngest learners with a technology?
Mr. Smith, or Mr. Sethi? I don't know. Mr. Smith, did you want to take that, or have Mr. Sethi?
I can let Mr. Sethi answer some questions, or answer the question a bit more fully, but we did look at a combination of tablets and laptops for our youngest learners. Those devices remain at school. They don't go back and forth with students, and, and that was, again, after input from a variety of stakeholders and review of a variety of devices, but I will let Mr. Sethi provide more information.
To the point of refresh, we have also applied for grant funding. That allows to bring in additional funds to help buy and refresh those technologies. So, as Mr. Smith was saying, we've done pilots, and we have a small amount deployed through our pre-K team in some schools and getting tested out, and then we are looking for large amounts to replace with additional funding as available through grants or other means.
Thank you. And something that, like Mr. Fresh, I'm going to get back to some of the pre-COVID advocacy. You know, time on device has always been one of my concerns. So, what guidance have we given teachers this year, especially in those lower grades, into how they should utilize these and these devices with these kids and, and time on devices specifically? Have we?
Mr. Smith, do you want to talk about that, or Dr. Presidio?
Well, we don't have set timelines and guidelines around that. I mean, largely at the younger grades, you know, students are really not on the devices, obviously, like you would see usage levels at the secondary level. But having the devices and having the ability for the students to maintain that connectivity when they need it, when they're out on quarantine, is something that is essential. And having the ability to have access to some of the digital curriculum that we have that is student, more self-paced and self-directed is critical. But the time in the classroom at the primary grades, there's very little time that really that the students are on the devices.
Okay. I'm happy to hear that, you know. I want our kids outside, and especially after last year, especially the youngest learners. And I know just anecdotally, some of the teachers in these younger grades have made it a point individually to tell parents that they are limiting. So, I'm just hoping that that is a message that gets out to all. And with that, we are, thank you, Dr. Brabran.
No, thank you all. This was a fun, exciting opening of schools report, and I really appreciate your comments and questions, and I look forward to further updates during the school year.
Thank you. We are going on to Agenda Item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is a portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include that action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Darnak Kofax for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was found responsible for a violation of Regulation 2118 and to confirm the decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cohen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Ms. Tolan, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Kizgumara, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. All those opposed? Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Seismorheiser, Ms. Omech. All those abstaining? Ms. Marin, that motion passes. Okay. Are we? Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes. I move to suspend the rules and consider Item 6.01 as an action item.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Tolan. It is moved and seconded to suspend the rules and consider Item 6.01 as an action item. As this is a request to suspend the rules, the motion is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If adopted, we will suspend the rules and take up Item 6.01 as an action item rather than as new business to be scheduled for a future meeting. All those in favor of suspending the rules? Ms. Tolan, Ms. Seismorheiser, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Kizgumara, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. All those opposed? Dr. Anderson, Ms. Marin, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax. That motion passes. And there are, there are fewer than two-thirds in favor of suspending the rules. I'm sorry. No, no, no. I call Ms. Corbett Sanders for a motion.
I move that effective October 9th, the superintendent be directed to increase transportation salary scales 2.5% across all lanes and steps, excluding those whose salaries increased based on previous direction to increase starting pay to $22.91 per hour at an estimated cost of $1.5 million and reduce the fuel contingency reserve by $1.5 million.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Tolan. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you very much. And I know that this is unusual to do this tonight, but it is because we are facing a national driver shortage. The National Association for Pupil Transportation survey, which was completed in August, indicated that 79% of the school systems in the Northeast have had to alter their routes, similar to what we have had to do here in Fairfax County because of the shortage of drivers. The rate of pay was identified as a major factor affecting their ability to recruit and retain drivers. Locally, Fairfax County Public Schools, Prince George's County, Prince William County, Montgomery County, and Loudoun County are recruiting for over 500 drivers. Here in Fairfax, we have about 180 vacancies. We've been talking about this pending challenge for over a year, and on Tuesday at the work session, we discussed it in detail that there was continuing to be a driver shortage. Tonight's motion is important as we face this national and local bus driver shortage as our decision to raise the floor and offer signing bonuses address the need for competitiveness in recruiting new drivers. Tonight's focus is on ensuring that we not only retain our valued employees, but are able to recruit more seasoned employees as well. 20% of our bus drivers are eligible for retirement, and we have known that this has been an impending challenge. So, what we're doing tonight is to send a message that we value our transportation staff, that we want to do this as an interim step while we wait for the more detailed market scale survey, and then it may be necessary to do further adjustments. That market scale survey is not expected to be done until December. That market scale survey was actually a follow-on motion from last year. So, in reviewing neighboring district pay scales, we know that their pay ranges exceed errors. Some are a little bit lower, some are higher. Tonight's action is a step in the right direction, and I hope that each of my colleagues will support me in pursuing this effort so that we can attract and retain the best and the brightest and get rid of those double runs.
Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Being the Drainsville representative, I think I would be remiss in not supporting this motion. Drainsville is in Area 4, and Area 4 has been impacted most across the entire county. So, I'm hearing daily from families that, you know, have issues with their bus runs. So, you know, I view this as, you know, a long-term way, not just, you know, looking at, you know, we've already looked at how to attract new drivers, but we need to look at this longer term and send a message today to our existing drivers that we value them and that we will pay them the competitive wage that they deserve so that we don't lose them, and as Ms. Corbett Sanders pointed out, that we can also attract more experienced drivers. This is not to say that we won't ask to continue to work with HR to get the full report that we've been talking about for an overall look at the bus driver scales, but this 2.5 increase that we're talking about now is necessary. We need to do it now so that we can retain these drivers. Even just putting this off for another two weeks is a delay in another pay period. And we're talking about 2.5% over the year. Each pay period makes a difference. I just heard in the last presentation, if I heard it correctly, that just by increasing the pay for our starting drivers, we went from five applications per week for bus drivers to over 20 to 30 applications per week. We need these drivers, and we need them now. So, I'll support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Cohen? Well, we've got, wait a minute. Okay. Ms. Omech, go ahead.
I move to amend the main motion by adding, quote, "And to direct the superintendent to examine salary scales to recognize years of service for existing employees, Steps 1 through 5, as a result of this change, and to return to the board with a plan to include the necessary modifications after consultation with key stakeholders as a part of the market scale study findings scheduled for presentation in December."
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cohen. All right, Ms. Omech, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to start by thanking Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Tolan for bringing the motion. I know they put in a lot of time back and forth with staff to get it right, and of course, thank you to Dr. Brabran for being responsive on ensuring that we are sending a clear and loud message to our bus drivers that they're valued and that we want to reflect that in our compensation. This step is in the right direction, though I want to make sure that when we, to make that step, it's, it's a holistic approach that considers the way it's going to impact our current employees. So, this change is a positive one in the right direction, but then we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where by increasing the amount for incoming employees, that we then put them in the same place as employees who've been around for many years before that. So, this hopefully will direct our superintendent to look into how this may affect Steps 1 through 5, and then the subsequent impacts, of course, because once we improve 1 through 5, we may then be looking at needing to reconsider 6 through 8, and, and so on and so forth. So, really trying to be holistic in how we think about this and having a long-term perspective that will hopefully add that cherry on top to make this the perfect motion for our bus drivers.
Ms. Cohen, would you like to talk to your second?
I would. This is really just trying to codify the conversations that we have all had, and Dr. Brabran has mentioned multiple times about that there will be a study that'll be coming out in December, and Ms. Omech and I, in several conversations with some of our support employees, bus drivers in particular, have just recognized that the, that increasing the starting salary as a bonus is great, except when we go through the scales 1 through 5, and as a five-year driver, if you're going to be making the same as a one-year driver, or as a five-year driver, you're not making anything close to what you'd make in Stafford as a five-year driver. Our drivers who've been on the job for five years right now are only at a Step 3 because we held steps back as, as a, you know, as a part of our budget conversations when things went south with our, with COVID budget. So, understandable why it happened, but we don't want to continue building on that. And as I said, the impact becomes that we build a really outstanding farm team for our surrounding jurisdictions. And so, the goal with this motion, with this amendment to the motion, is just to ensure that while we're doing the 2.5 now, awesome, but we want our drivers to know that we're going to be working to ensure that along every step along the way, that we are market competitive with our neighboring counties.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. My first question, Dr. Brabran, is based on this, oh, shoot. All right. Well, then I guess we'll go, we'll go to Lee and Sean McDonald. One of you might be able to answer for the superintendent. Does this, does... Does this, does this amendment to the main motion reflect anything that you did not plan to do? Like, basically, without the board's direction, was this not going to happen?
I can answer that, Ms. McLaughlin. So that is part of our regular study. So we're going to be bringing the board a benchmark comparison of neighboring jurisdictions with an analysis of the minimum midpoint and maximum of those scales, as well as with some explanation of how we have compressed the scales and what the possible impact would be of making adjustments at the lower end of the scale and what that could mean for financial impacts for the upper end of the scale. So that is part of the work that we're doing.
So Mr. Smith, if I understand you correctly, everything that's in this amendment to the main motion is something that by best practice you all plan to already do?
It is part of the work that we already...
It's part of the work you plan to do. So, my colleagues, here's my concern, is we can pass this, which I, you know, I always believe on getting the most robust data and best practice. Do we want to signal that either the board doesn't understand that we have a superintendent and his team who is doing this best practice work? And so we had to, through redundancy, direct him to do the very thing that they profess they're already doing? This is why, I'll be speaking later, why I'm not happy about what we're doing here tonight. There is way too much rushed discussion. I respectfully disagree with the characterization that we talked extensively, as was stated at the work session. There were so many topics at Tuesday's work session, nothing was spoken about extensively. This is a new business item. It was perfect for us to advertise this to the public. We all care about our bus drivers. We also care about all of our employees. So I'm torn on what we're doing here tonight. I don't think it reflects the board's best work. I appreciate the amendment with the fact that it had good intentions, but we just heard from staff that this is already what they're planning to do. So I feel foolish, honestly, to vote for an amendment that staff's already told us they're doing. And if we just had time and not rushed here tonight, we all 12 would know that they planned to do exactly this. So I want you all to know where my concerns are. I don't see the point of adding this in, but, you know, I would ask why we're doing this.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I think that the two motions, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omech, Ms. Cohen, are signaling to our bus drivers and the increased bus driver applicant pool that we heard about that we mean business. And that's okay. At any given time, you will find members of this board solemnizing things that the superintendent has said that he's going to do. And, you know, I think that's a perfectly debatable thing to have conversations about. In this case, I think that it's a good thing to do. This has caused significant problems that we've all had to deal with throughout the county. These first initial steps get us part of the way there to fixing this problem. This gets us another step there to fixing this problem. And then getting the people hired is going to fix the problem. This will help us do that. And I have no problem. Look, staff is working on a lot of different things. We heard tonight on a follow-on motion that this board passed a year and a half ago, that they're not yet ready to get it implemented because they're busy. Well, I think that this work is more important than that motion that I passed or that this board passed that I sponsored a year and a half ago. And if it means that we signal to the superintendent and his team, who are working very hard, that this is a priority for us to get it done by December, I think that's the right thing to do. Best intentions backed up by the will of this board can get us somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Marin?
Thank you. I feel similarly to Ms. McLaughlin that I feel like this is a bit out of sync. And especially when I look at the communication that we received from advocates that represent the school bus drivers and support staff in the Bus Driver Attendant Advisory Council and the Fairfax Support Professionals Association. I understand the intent of the amendment, but given that staff is working on this, given also that the calendar process, that is an area where our drivers and support staff have also advocated a lot. It's not just about money. I mean, I've been advocating since the get-go, since I got on the board, about let's put people on a salary and give them benefits, and so they don't have to scramble and put together all these different jobs to go to. And, well, of course, we want to increase their pay. Is this little bit at a time in doing it piecemeal really the best way? I don't think so. We're starting the calendar process in October. We're going to vote on it scheduled in January, showing our staff that we are hearing what they're saying. It's not just about pay. It's about time that they are clocking. It's about job security. I think that does more to honor our commitment to them than just sporadically increasing even salaries, especially like that Dr. Braybrand just shared earlier, that our application rates are up a lot just in what's been done already. So just in the world of limited resources, when I think of all these things together, this just seems out of sync with the other things that are already happening around and that we can be more holistic and really show our people that we're thinking about all the different aspects that makes them want to stay in FCPS.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Just point of clarification, Ms. Bukowski, are we speaking to the amendment or to both of the motions?
We're speaking to the amendment.
Okay. Speaking to the amendment, I do want to echo what Ms. Marin and Ms. McLaughlin have shared. You know, just earlier today, you and I had a very long conversation about should we be bringing forward things that are already part of the staff's work? We talked about this earlier, and I know I reiterate that to at least two or three other board members. This is doing the same. So I have to be consistent in my approach and thinking, and if this is work that's already started, I really don't see the need to reinvent the wheel on this one, even to codify it. I have a lot of other statements and some questions, and I'm trying to see if they all are to this one. You know what? I'm just going to ask them anyway because I'm not sure what, which motion it goes with. So...
Well, we're speaking to the amendment, so if you'd like...
I mean, to this, I don't know which one it goes with, but it will help to give me some information. So I wanted to ask staff...
Can we stick to the amendment, though? Just want to make sure they're directed at the amendment.
Yeah, it's related to this. It's related to all of this work. I just have not been able to parse it out. We talked about, obviously, what you shared earlier, which is that the, that the bonuses have been doing a great job of attracting drivers to Fairfax County. Do we have any idea what the shortages are in the jurisdictions around us?
Mr. McDonald, do we have information about other school district actual vacancies for bus drivers?
I don't have numbers on actual vacancies. I have more anecdotal information around the fact that other divisions in Region 4 are also struggling with finding a sufficient number of drivers to transport students. I'm also aware of a nationwide concern. There's several news articles and reports all across the country of school systems struggling with the same issue. I'm also aware of the fact that there's an acute issue in the state of Massachusetts where they activated the National Guard to transport students. So we're not unique in our need, and I am aware on an anecdotal level of needs in surrounding jurisdictions, just not specific vacancy counts.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm just going to stop right here and just go back to the amendment on the table, which is, I feel it's redundant, and I won't be able to support it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other school board members who'd like to speak to the amendment?
Sanders.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Yes, I am going to agree with my colleagues who just spoke tonight. This board, we talk about the need to be more efficient and strategic. And here we are at 11, I don't know, what is it, 10:50, 10:50 at night, discussing about passing an amendment or to the motion, which the staff just told us they're doing. I, it, I don't disagree with this work. I don't, you know, we value our employees and what this needs to happen, but staff told us they're doing it. I see no, it makes zero sense to me that in any strategic way or efficient way that we should pass this when Mr. Smith just told us he's doing it. So that's the reason I will be abstaining from this. I don't disagree with the premise, but if staff is doing this, I see no reason to continue to discuss this.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on the amendment bef... Oh, Ms. Omech, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify and address a number of these pieces. This is not exactly the same. And part of this actually came out of the challenge, the community response to the motion that was posted. There's a misunderstanding and lack of clarification as to whether we're going to take into consideration a holistic view and looking at those folks who've been in the steps. That's number one. Number two, I want to make it very clear that this includes a requirement to consult with key stakeholder groups because they've felt that they've not been a part of this process. And we've already sent the wrong message as to how we, what our stance is for supporting our bus drivers with past decisions and now. And this is an opportunity to show differently and to ensure that our staff engage those key stakeholders, the advisory groups and others, in coming up with the solution. And finally, how many times have we, as a board, commissioned a study, looked, requested a report, and found findings that are not necessarily what the community is comfortable with or that may have left out pieces that we are looking for? So this is a key piece here in ensuring we're explicit as a board and pointing out exactly what we want to have come back to us, which is that piece in examining how this is going to impact the steps and make sure that we're making long-term decisions that are taking into consideration all the various components. So I just want to make it very clear that there are additive pieces to this that are different than just directing the superintendent in broad terms to come back with the findings of the study. And if nothing else, we should at least have a very clear statement from our superintendent that that's his commitment. And as a board, back that. So I ask you all to consider those pieces because what we're communicating to the community by this motion alone is that we're piecemealing this to get it off our backs as opposed to really being intentional and keeping in mind all our employees, including the existing staff. If nothing else, the reputational value and the care and culture we're trying to build is enough to be reason for this.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Dr. Braybrand, can you speak to, and I know this is work that is in planning, what was the thinking in terms of who would be involved in this discussion? I don't know if this is Mr. Smith or...
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Smith go to that as we were going to go, start to look at the salary scales, how we do that process, and who we involve. Mr. Smith?
Well, initially, when we're doing benchmarking, we look at other jurisdictions. We do a review of the market. We look at our scales as a comparison to other scales. We have actively been engaged with our stakeholder groups. The emails that you're getting, the conversations that you're having, we have had those same conversations. And so we take all of that into consideration as we bring a recommendation back to the board.
Thank you. And Dr. Braybrand, as Ms. Omech just said, we are looking for some commitment that this is going to be done in a timely manner, in a thorough manner by December. Can you provide us with that commitment?
I believe, Mr. Smith, we previously shared that we would have it done by the end of the calendar year.
Yes. We will be bringing a recommendation back to the board, yes, before the end of the year.
Thank you. So I think in this conversation, I have what I would need from staff to move this forward. And so, again, this is redundant work for me.
Okay, excellent. Ms. Cohen?
I just think one of the most important points that I want to emphasize is that we can't do one without the other. What we're arguing, what we have said, many of us today and since school started, our phones, our emails are plagued by people who are having trouble getting their kids to school. And so we're trying, and I think we're generally, you know, working awfully hard to find real solutions that are crisis solutions. And sometimes in a crisis, we got a triage. And the best way to do that is to ensure that we are comprehensively looking at this, which I think many people on the board have expressed frustration over the years that we fix one thing, but then we accidentally don't fix something else, and then their unintended consequence is quite the opposite of what we intended. So when we initially put out this conversation on Tuesday that Dr. Braybrand was having about the two and a half percent, we were very fortunate to have a lot of folks reach out to us who this directly impacts and say, "Two and a half is great, but the real impact is going to really set back drivers who are in this five-year, the step three to five are going to struggle in this capacity." And if you can't signal as a board, we value you. We value drivers who are, you know, not brand new, who are here. Because remember, drivers who are current are not getting the $3,000, right? That's a recruitment bonus. So I want us to remember, we're trying to bring people in, but we're also trying to stop the bleeding of having people leave this system. So I guess I struggle a little bit with the idea that as a board, it isn't our responsibility to communicate to our community and to our staff, "We hear you. We hear this is a major problem. Your child's school day begins the minute that they get on the bus or the minute that they don't. And the minute they don't, it becomes your problem," which for so many of our families means kids are left out at bus stops, neighbors are called to scramble and try to get kids to school, kids are left, you know, get home an hour and a half late because we don't have enough people not to do double backs. We recognize this as a problem. We need to comprehensively address it. And the idea is, Ms. Corbett and Ms. Tolan's motion is awesome, but it cannot live alone. And so we want to show that this is essential and is essential to include our stakeholders, and one thing cannot happen without the other. And that's the message and the point of this amendment.
Thank you. I will go ahead and call for the vote on the amendment before us on the screen. All those in favor? Ms. Tolan, Ms. Eismoreheiser, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Kies-Gamara, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. All those opposed? Dr. Anderson? All those abstaining? Ms. Marin, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnett Kofax. That motion passes, and we will now go back to the main motion, which will be put on the screen before us. School board members who wish to speak to the main motion? Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I think I'm going to start with some of my questions that fit here a little bit better. If this motion were to pass, Dr. Braybrand and staff, when would our drivers see this in their paychecks?
Mr. Smith or Ms. Byrne, when, when, when would it take place in the paycheck? I think we, I think it said October 9th is when it would take effect, but in the actual paycheck, isn't that a two-week delay? But I'm not the expert, so I'll defer to the right person.
It's October 23rd. October 23rd, two weeks later.
October 25th?
23rd.
23rd. October 23rd is the answer.
October 23rd, so just a couple of weeks before this full study is to be provided. One of the things I want to really be mindful of is, you know, I've had conversations with other people before where, about other topics, where people are telling us what is it that they want, and for us to listen to it is what they want. So I want to come into the spirit of this conversation with that. And even tonight, we were, we were asked by one of our participants to listen, and I want to do that. You know, we've got some very, some very good information from the co-founder of FSPA and the chair of VDAC, the Bus Driver Attendant Advisory Council. And what was shared to me under no uncertain terms is that he is not feeling as if this motion, as it is, will highlight, will help to address the inequities that stem from the situation that we're in. It is well-intended. I think we all know that. But there are still numerous questions that are not answered, impact to benefits. Could not have highlighted more for me the need for a thoughtful reform to the bus driver scale that is comprehensive and thorough. Information in terms of this is just a Band-Aid. This is what was articulated to me. This is a Band-Aid approach, and I believe we have to be more strategic than that. We talk about that all the time. I would like to have the benefit of all of the studies that Mr. I would like to have the benefit of all of the studies that Mr. Smith shared that they will be engaging in in order for us to make a thoughtful conversation, I'm, I'm sorry, thoughtful decision. What I'm also worried, and this was raised to me because I'm not in the ranks, is that this may result in a rift between drivers. And I don't think we want that among the employee group where one group is getting something right now and the others are still waiting for something to happen for them come December or whenever that happens. We do need to be competitive. We do need to retain our drivers. We do need to attract more drivers. We do need to pay them their worth. I do need to have my kid on the bus. That's not a double run coming into school at 9:30. All of these things are important. But I think we need to be thoughtful and have a comprehensive approach that impacts all drivers on all of those scales from one to level whatever. I don't know what the last step is. So I want to buy us the gift of time to approach this issue in a comprehensive manner. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. A couple of questions for staff. Uh, Mr. Plattenberg and then, uh, Mr. McDonald as, uh, the Transportation Superintendent and then the Assistant, or the Superintendent for HR, did either of you, um, lobby or, or advocate to the superintendent that we really needed the board to vote on this tonight versus in two weeks or at any other point in time? I mean, was it your urgent, your urgent advocacy that we needed to move this up and, and get this voted on and put in place tonight?
Well, I haven't even seen the amendment until, until this point, so. My, but anytime that there's an opportunity for pay, um, for employees, if someone were to ask me, you know, if I was gonna get paid now or later, um, I think I'd, you know, I, if someone were gonna give me a raise, I wouldn't turn it down. But I, I hadn't even seen this, though. I don't know about Mr. McDonald.
He didn't specifically, uh, come to me and say to pass it tonight. That's the answer.
Okay. The reason I ask is because, Mr. Plattenberg, as you know, I reached out to you today because I respect your role as the head of transportation, and I really did wanna understand the urgency piece because I wanna make clear because of statements that are being made tonight, every single board member, all 12 of us, do care about our bus drivers. We do value them. We do wanna make sure they have competitive pay. We also care about every single one of our employees. There's no, this, this employee is more important than that employee. And so when we're talking about making changes to pay scales, changes that happen to one employee group, if, depending on, since we don't have the market study, I don't know where the 2.5 came from. So, Dr. Brabran, can you share with the board, 'cause this wasn't explained, what's driving the 2.5% number? What's that, what's that based on?
I, I, I'm not sure about the 2.5%. I, I'd have to defer that to Mr. Smith or Ms. Burn.
So there were questions about, uh, what a 2% increase would look like for, uh, our employees and what a 2.5% increase would look like for employees. And, and this came out of, uh, also having conversations with, uh, members of some of our, uh, employee groups looking at, uh, possible increases, uh, for bus drivers as we looked at raising the starting salary from 22, or from $18 to 2291. Uh, and so that's, uh, how we started looking at some of these numbers, uh, while also wanting to remind the board that we were in the process of undertaking a comprehensive study to, uh, address what other jurisdictions are doing with their scales and bringing that information back to the board about minimum, midpoint, and maximum for a, a scale recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so it's, it is my understanding, um, that, uh, this, this Band-Aid is how it's been characterized. Uh, we put this in place. Then, Mr. McDonald, what is, what is the chance that, um, putting this in place could end up putting us over the market? And then how do we talk with our other employees, even in other employee groups, about why we're paying our bus drivers X percent over market, but all the other employees are paid at market? Like, is that gonna create an equity challenge for us?
So, yes, there is an opportunity or a chance that, uh, you know, making this adjustment could put us in a position where we would fall above market. I don't have all of the data currently available to make the assessment at this point in time. Ultimately, as we've had these conversations, not only this evening, uh, but throughout the, the past couple of weeks and months around this need, um, ultimately, there could be an inequity between employee groups, yes. I would acknowledge that if we're, we're falling above market. Uh, we always have that, that opportunity because of the cycle of our review, that there are going to be groups of employees that perhaps may fall above or below market, um, depending on that review cycle. Uh, but, you know, this is a recruitment and retention, uh, challenge for us, and, and sometimes you do need to step out a, a little bit from that traditional path and, um, take steps like the board has already done in terms of raising the floor of pay for our bus drivers to, to recruit that talent into the organization.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. And as I recall, you said you, you, you were waiting on about four more WABE schools to get their pay scale data. So, um, I guess the other question that I have, um, related to this is, um, board members have expressed concern that we're losing, um, bus drivers and so, and that waiting two more weeks, treating this as a new business item, which has been my advocacy from the beginning, taking this as an action item in two weeks where we will have more pay scale data to make an informed, data-driven decision, and a fiscally informed decision. How many bus drivers have we lost in the last two weeks that we could project out that it means we're gonna lose X number of bus drivers in the next two weeks were we to wait? Like, how many, how many bus drivers have, have we hemorrhaged in the last two weeks?
My understanding from my team is that, uh, over the past three weeks, we've lost two bus drivers.
We've lost two bus drivers in the last three weeks. So to the concerns that some colleagues have shared with me, there isn't any evidence that if we were to wait and be more informed and use the data in two weeks, that we demonstrate to the public that what our best practices have always been. You listed as new business, you have an opportunity to make sure any more information we need to make an informed decision occurs, and then we take action on it two weeks from tonight. So I, I know that it's very late. Um, I just wanna reiterate because I really am uncomfortable with things that have been said behind the scenes and even at the board table. Make no mistake, every single one of the board members at this table care deeply about our bus drivers. We're supportive of the bonuses. We're supportive of making sure that we have competitive pay. But we should be doing it in a thoughtful, informed, data-driven manner, and that's what makes me uncomfortable about what's happening here tonight, and it's why I do plan to abstain from this motion. Abstention meaning you need more information.
Ms. Cohen?
I appreciate getting to speak to the motion. Um, you know, I just certainly wanna say nobody is trying to characterize that the board doesn't care about any class of employees. This board has consistently targeted specific groups of employees at different times to try to figure out either one, where we are hemorrhaging employees, just like we did the AT contracts that we just extended for sped employees. Last year and the two years before that, we worked on our IA salaries, targeted just those groups. Before that, we just did our teachers. So I, I, I feel like I just want to explain that there are different times when we have to rise up and need, meet the needs of individual groups, and this isn't done on a whim. This is a conversation that has been ongoing in FCPS for two years, that we're losing bus drivers, losing bus drivers. When we got onto this board, we're already 80 drivers short. So this isn't new. This is, how do we figure out comprehensively together? I don't disagree in any way with what Dr. Anderson said, that we need to make sure that when, um, we have open enrollment again in a few weeks, that for all of our employees across the board, we don't wind up having them ultimately lose money in their paycheck because health goes up. But that affects everybody. That's something we're gonna have to address for every person. Right now, we're talking about a very targeted group of people who we have got to keep. And the two and a half percent, just so people have some idea out there in the audience, if you are on step six, so meaning right now you've been driving for at least eight years in FCPS, this two and a half percent will give you 58 cents an hour more. So we are not talking about a world where you're all of a sudden going from $9 to 15. We, we're talking 58 cents an hour, roughly 46 bucks a paycheck. So at the end of the day, the idea is we have a massive problem that is impacting every day, and people on this board, our own children, as a side note. So we are trying to be responsive to the needs of our constituents, and right now those needs mesh very nicely with the problem we've long had in FCPS with attracting and retaining bus drivers. So let's comprehensively work out how to do it together, and then we get to move on to some of the bigger areas that we have where we're talking about diversifying our, um, you know, employees. We're talking about trying to make sure that we're getting them the best health coverage at the best price. We have many, many things to tackle. So let's knock this one out. We have happy parents, happy kids, happy bus drivers. Man, that's a winning combination. Let's just get it done. It's 11 o'clock.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Um, thank you. I wanted to address a couple of things. Um, there was a concept that we might create a rift. The rift exists because we took a, made a decision back in August, which was a necessary decision to raise our floor. And there are people who realize significant pay increases, um, percentage-wise, to get to that $21 and change. But there are other people that didn't get a raise, and that sent a message to the bus drivers, which then, you know, you say, "Oh, we only lost two bus drivers in the past two weeks." But we were already short a significant number of bus drivers. So losing two is a big deal. What I'd like to know, uh, Mr. Smith, is to better understand from you, by raising all these, uh, categories by two and a half percent, will that allow you, or actually, uh, Mr. Plattenberg can answer it as well, will that allow you to actually recruit bus drivers into more senior levels? People that may already have their CDL licenses from other jurisdictions in the same way that we lost two?
So, so, yes, that would allow us to place bus drivers at a higher, uh, place on the scale if they're coming to us with experience.
Excellent. Um, and so I guess one of the things that I'm looking at is that this is a holistic. But the other thing is, when we talked a bit about the study, you said, and, and this follow-on motion from last year was to have that study completed by the end of December, to have it come to us in December so that it could influence next year's budget cycle. Isn't that what the original intent was?
Yes, that was the intent.
So for us to wait, we're not talking about waiting a couple of weeks. And then I actually asked you when we were having these conversations about, well, if we wait, can we go back and, um, as, when we had this conversation of, back in August, when we first started talking about, most recently started talking about pay raises for the other bus drivers, there was a concept that we could possibly, um, pay back, you know, go back and pay people, uh, for the higher rates at a later date. And what was the, I, in having that conversation, we were told that that was incredibly labor-intensive. And that we didn't have the staff to be able to do that. Is that correct?
So it, it is incredibly labor-intensive to, uh, do that look back and, as, in terms of where we are at this point in the year and, uh, with, uh, the multiple things that we are, uh, I would say juggling in HR at this point with multiple pay scales, multiple stipends, multiple bonuses that have grown out of escher. Uh, our, our HR staff, our payroll staff, our, our operational staff is stretched extremely thinly.
Excellent. So it's actually, i- if we're talking about trying to get pay into people's hands, and if we wait and they don't see it until November, that's almost, that's two months into the school year. Is that correct?
Yes.
So two months in, what percentage is that? Is that 20% of the school year? It's actually maybe a little higher because the middle months have a lot of holidays.
Uh, approximately, yes. And, uh, uh, of course, we, uh, there are months where our drivers, uh, do make less because they work less, uh, fewer days.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
Ms. Tolan?
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, I mean, I don't think anyone would argue with the fact that, of course, we could get more data and we could study this more thoroughly. Is it a Band-Aid? Yeah, it's a Band-Aid, and we need it. Okay, I've got kids in Drainsville that are showing up at school an hour late every day, and they're taking AP classes, and they're missing school. So I know it's September, and I know we've got, you know, every year that this is, can be an issue, but this year we are really short of bus drivers. And these are working families that can't drive their kids to school. So do we need a Band-Aid? I think we do. We have added this amendment. We're gonna study it. We're really gonna look at it for the longer term, but, um, you know, I think we need to do something now. We do have information on our neighboring counties. Um, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you had pulled up some of this information. You know, Prince George is, is short 200 drivers. Montgomery County's short 100 drivers. We're short, what did we say, 177? You know, people are, are scrambling to hire all around us. So I think we need to be, um, doing the best job that we can to recruit drivers.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Yes. So, um, I just do have a question, Mr. Plattenberg. What's the average salary of our bus drivers? Like, an average salary?
I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of our head. I know that, uh, when we raised it to 2291 and...
Mr. McDonald, do you have that?
I don't have that number today. Um, we didn't, we haven't rerun it because we have adjusted the salaries.
So you can't give me a range?
We have, I mean, I, I don't have the distribution of, of folks by pay step at this point, no. We, I mean, we have, I can tell you what the pay range is, but not the number of folks. Yeah. So we're starting out at 2291.
Yeah.
Uh, and we go all the way up to, uh, 34, 49 an hour.
But you don't have an, uh, 34 what?
34, 49.
49, okay. But you don't have a range, what these drivers get on average? You, you have no, nothing? Dr. Brabran, do you know? Oh, he's not here either. I'm not trying to be, um, flippant on this point or call you out, but, you know, I have been really looking at some of my issues where we have retention issues or we can't find people, you know, in some of my special education classes. We have, you know, our public training, um, public health, uh, assist, public health training assistants and public health, uh, attendants. And these people, we, we can't find, we can't find enough of these people either, and I was trying to get a salary range to see if they were in the same circumstance because these people make about $23,000 a year and, um, up to 36. So what I am struggling with, I, I hear everybody's advocacy, I know we have to get the kids to school, so I will be, and I support our bus drivers. We, um, I have had a longstanding record of working with these employees and making sure. But what I feel is that there's whole pockets of missing information here that I... that I don't know about. And when we, there are other people that we need that have severe recruiting needs. What are we doing there? So I feel these one-off things are very, they're slippery. They're slippery. And, you know, when I can't even get a salary range and then when I, you know, and some of these groups, they're just smaller groups and so they don't have the advocacy around them. I will be most likely supporting this. But again, I think we as a board have to be more strategic. We have to ask of our staff. We have to have that information. It's astounding that you can't give me a pay, an annual salary range for this. And I also just feel as though when we have other vacancies that are very, very important, it's, you know, I feel like I could have brought an amendment like that for them tonight because we're trying to recruit them. And, you know, with starting salaries at $21,000, they're, they do some of our most, what should I say, angelic and hardest work for some of our hardest special need kids. So that's what I just want everybody to understand, how difficult one-off situations are, even if the intent is well. And because we are in a crisis, I am hopeful that this will help. And, but I think it is not strategic in the way it needs to be because we have other, other groups of employees that we can't hire. And they have, they have low starting salaries and spend low pay grades and have hard jobs as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darinak Kofax. Ms. Maron?
Yeah, you know, I do want to say, I know it's late, but I think it is good to have transparent conversations like this. I think we can get better at scheduling them during daylight hours perhaps. But, you know, what you said, Ms. Darinak Kofax, really does resonate with me. I mean, I think about the substitute shortage we have. We have central office staff going in to substitute classes, IAs, lunch staff, special education teachers. I really do think that it is, we're not being strategic if we're just going to do these one-off things. We happen to hear a lot of pertinent advocacy from a critical group of people, but all of our staff are critical. So where do we draw the line? And making a decision like this, one-off, we have a budget committee to do this kind of work. Maybe that can happen there and come to the board. We're having a budget meeting in a few weeks. It's, this is just, it's, I'm not happy with how this is operating, especially since I also was seeking to bring forth motions this evening, but sought not to because they needed more time, they needed more coalescing, and I wanted to be consistent in what we're doing. So I don't think this is a precedent that I want, I want to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a few moments to speak as well. I can appreciate, I think, where some of the concerns are coming. We do want to be transparent. We do want to have all the information together easily accessible. I feel I did get a lot of this information. Yes, it may have been a little bit disjointed through, you know, because it was fast. And as somebody who did bring that follow-on in the last budget, I do think this is strategic. I, I mean, this is a critical need that we've been talking about for the longest time. And honestly, kudos to our budget team who were able to figure out a way to get this done sooner than I was with that follow-on in the last budget cycle that directed us to bring this back in December. I don't think it's a one and done. I mean, obviously, we're still going to, to, to look at this. But I think this is a critical shortage, very, very well documented. And I, I, I hope this helps and I'm sure we're going to evaluate it and, and continue to, continue to, you know, discuss ways that we can. Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought I was, go ahead, Ms. Kees-Gamara.
I'd like to call the question. Oh, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That was the last one. I was ready to call.
Oh, no, no, no.
I was ready to take the vote. That was it. I was just sharing my comments. So thank you. So back to the main motion, which is on the screen, and I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Ms. Tolan, Ms. Sizemoreheiser, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Kees-Gamara, oh, Ms. Darinak Kofax, Ms. Omech, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Dr. Anderson, Ms. Maron, Ms. McLaughlin, and that motion passes. I will now turn the meeting over to the vice chair for the consent agenda.
Agenda item five, consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a single consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item six, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business items are on the screen. I will turn the meeting back over to Chair Bukarski.
Agenda item 7.01, superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Bukarski. I'll be super brief, but I do have one announcement. I want you to know that Sangster Elementary School has been named a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Ed. Woo-hoo! Fairfax, this county school is one of seven schools in Virginia, just seven, to receive this honor. The Blue Ribbon Schools program from the U.S. Department of Ed honors high-performing students in schools making exemplary progress toward closing achievement gaps. Sangster was noted for its high achievement in reading and math in the 1819 school year. And Sangster was recognized for closing the achievement gap in math, a gap in math by 15% for students with special needs and special education. As Principal Allison Jakovic says, Sangster's strength lies in the welcoming and celebratory environment it strives to create where everyone who walks through its doors know that they are valued and appreciated. And I know that Allison and also Lisa Rydel, who was principal there prior to Allison, both are super proud of this, this wonderful designation. So the Department of Ed will be honoring all of the schools, including Sangster, in an award ceremony November 4th and 5th. So we can't wait to celebrate with Sangster. Congratulations, Sangster Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Agenda item 8.01, board committee reports. And I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a budget committee update.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Bukarski. The budget committee has met with staff and put together initial plans for how the board can set priorities to discuss with the superintendent. And so you all have each received a questionnaire to go through and then respond back to both Ms. Tolan and myself. And then we will be having a meeting on October 5th to work together as a team to establish the priorities to share not only with the superintendent, but also so that we can go to the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors in November, coalesce along the priorities that are important to this board. I want to personally thank Ms. Maron and Ms. Darinak Kofax for the excellent work that they did last year in developing much of this process. And we are building on that process to ensure that we continue to work to set priorities and give a heads up. So thank you, ladies, for all your hard work and we'll be building on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will go to agenda item 9.01, our board matters. And I will go ahead and call on Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. Given that it's late, I will be brief. I want to quickly highlight the three schools that I was able to visit this week, Bailey's Primary, Sleepy Hollow, and Glen Forest. I was very excited to meet all of those principals who I have not yet met in person because they came in during COVID. So it was nice to see them from behind the screen. Principal Dews, Principal Fallon, Principal Herndon Wilson, respectively, at those schools. It was just fantastic to see all of our kids working hard, really demonstrating resilience in their new normal. And I just really wanted to just highlight the efforts of all of the staff, teachers, and principals who are working to not only educate our students, but really handling so many pandemic-related impacts. And I think that takes up a lot of their day. Also, regarding National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is from September 15th to October 15th, Falls Church High School ESAL teacher, Ms. Thales Perez, was highlighted by the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Career and Technical Education in celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Ms. Thales Perez immigrated to the U.S. with her parents from Venezuela as a young child. She shared that she sees her story in many of her students. She describes her students as resilient and hardworking, and she strives to make a connection with them every single day. Thank you to Ms. Thales Perez and all of our wonderful FCPS teachers for making a difference each and every day in the lives of our students. Lastly, I do want to share with the Justice Pyramid community that the follow-up meeting, following the bound, the proposal for the addition and all of the related issues with Justice Park, that meeting has been confirmed for October 12th at 7:00 p.m. You'll find more information in my newsletter about where to sign up. And also OCCR will be sending a message as well. So I look forward to hearing the updates with the community from staff regarding our next steps. And thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I'll be brief. I want to thank my colleague, Ms. Darinak Kofax, for joining me yesterday at the original Mount Vernon High School where we did the ribbon cutting for the senior center and the teen center. This is such an important activity because of the intergenerational work that will be done at that center. And I was thrilled to hear that Grand Involve is also active in working with the community there. And Grand Involve is a, certainly one of the best examples of intergenerational work in support of our kids, but also very supportive of our seniors that are working with our kids. Edu Tutor is also working with students in that area. I want to thank the various principals who have invited me to their schools. I've been doing some school visits and I am just amazed at the excellent work that is happening in our elementary schools. I will encourage that we get more of our kids outside. Thank you.
Ms. Maron, followed by Ms. Omech.
Yes, I just want to continue to recognize that September is Suicide Prevention Month. And there have been many resources shared. And I particularly though want to highlight that this month also saw the observation of Physician Suicide Prevention Month. And we heard earlier how pediatricians in particular are overwhelmed with the amount of families seeking help for their children. So, you know, please, parents and families, you know, consider the, you know, what you can do to be patient and kind towards these professionals who have dedicated their life to keeping us and our children well. They need our support. I wanted to congratulate Terraceta Elementary School librarian, Deanna Dueño, who was chosen by Time Magazine as one of 29 educators who, quote, "saved a pandemic year," school year. So she delivered books to students, loading up her car and visiting as many as 50 houses every Monday with a curated stack of books for the students there. So her visits were the source of excitement and connection for learning and the Terraceta community. Thank you. And in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, which we're now in through the middle of October, I wanted to give a shout out to constituent Paul Berry, who serves as a Hunter Mill appointee to the Career Tech Education Advisory Committee. He is the chair of the Virginia Latino Advisory Board and actually is receiving an award from Senator Tim Kaine in recognition of his public service contributing to the welfare and benefit of the Latino community. So we're very pleased to have him advising the school board in those matters. So this week, we had a really exciting meeting with some staff around Get to Green planning, really figuring out how we can include that in budgeting and ongoing work and making it very accessible to teachers. We also, we, I helped a lot of constituents with constituent, with facilities, challenges, especially during renovation. I was pleased to attend this week on the Vienna Town Green, the mayor's award ceremony, for which I was humbled to be included in a group that helps support the Liberty Amendments efforts. All those activities, amazing activities that happened this June in observance of equity and advancement of the Liberty Amendments. And I've also been really thankful for constituents applying to committees. Had a lot of vacancies on our committees, including our Challenge Materials Committee, which is the appropriate venue to bring materials such as the ones for older readers mentioned earlier this evening, which were inappropriate to share for an audience of all ages, which is who this public board meeting is accessible to. And just coming up this weekend is the Rested Multicultural Festival from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Lake Anne. So come one, come all, rain or shine, all ages, songs, dance, food, art. I will be there. And then I'm looking forward next week to the 50th anniversary of Cornerstones. So it began in 1970 to address homelessness and affordable housing. And now it's a really significant human resources, human services provider. And during this last year, they served 16,000 individuals, including 5,300 children who experienced homelessness, poverty, and inequity in Northern Virginia. That's all. Thank you.
All right. So a number of my colleagues acknowledged, of course, Hispanic Heritage Month, which we continue to be in. I want to just highlight the true importance of facilitating a safe and nurturing environment for our students to grow confident and proud of their identities. We certainly want to raise the future Hispanic, Latinx, whichever term floats your boat because I know there are different opinions about it all. But that generation to be proud of who they are and strong through their journeys in life, supported by their culture and heritage every step of the way, in recognizing that Hispanic heritage is also American heritage. I also wanted to thank our staff, our, our school community and our strong support teams for helping resettle very quickly 80 different Afghan families, refugees that have come in recent, in light of the recent events. And then, of course, want to also acknowledge that we did just complete our first month of school. So congratulations to everyone, to our students who have successfully pulled through, to our staff who no doubt have had tremendous difficulties but have prevailed. And of course, our leadership team from the top all the way down for their hard work throughout this time. I'd also be remiss not to comment and acknowledge what happened today in our meeting. I want to just put out there that, you know, there was a lot of pain in the room today. I think we have to continue to acknowledge that we're all coming from different walks of life and we are coming with different perspectives as we approach our school system and that we come together ultimately in what's best for our kids. And, and that's the piece that's going to bind us together. That's the part we have to always center and remember. And that there is a mutual respect that needs to be engaged with, of course, and that we all need to maintain to be able to communicate and understand. Otherwise, this is going to be the demise of all of us. You know, our vision and our dream of one Fairfax, this idea of a place where, you know, every person can grow and authentically be themselves and bring their full self to the table, and channeling a little bit of Dr. Williams here, where we have to hold that muscle and, and hold that space for when we disagree and when we're confused by things that we hear from one another. Because we, again, we all come back to that common goal. We're trying to build a school system that is safe, that is healthy, that is a place where all of our children can thrive. And certainly, as a board, I know we're committed to ensuring everyone feels heard and respected, no matter their perspective, but that we also ensure that we're cultivating an environment that is conducive to those values for everyone in the room, no matter who they are. So I, I put that out there. It's, these are the growing pains of getting to that place where we can come together and hopefully fight for that goal together. And the alternative, you know, of course, is to venture into our own extremes, which is not going to move our country forward, which is not going to move our community forward. So I say this having reflected a lot over the past summer, but really, you know, truly wanting to hopefully remind us all of our common goal, our common objective, and wanting to make sure everyone feels heard, that we hold the space for people's pain, and then have productive ways to move along so long as we're on the same page that this is a place for everybody.
Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Kees-Gamara.
Thank you. It has been my pleasure to visit a number of schools in the, in the past weeks and to monitor the school news across Drainsville. Two things have really emerged from these. Two things have really emerged from these visits and from my reading of all of these great principal newsletters. Community building and student passions and interests. Perhaps this is what I picked up on, because I feel that these are such important parts of what we do as a school system. On top of providing exceptional academic experiences for our children, we are in a position to help our overall communities grow and prosper, and we can instill in our children a love of learning and a way to build on their strengths and interests. I attended the Celebrate McLean evening last week and was very happy to talk to most of the clubs and activities represented, and to hear directly from the students why they were spending time and energy outside of school to work in these areas. Some were sports, some were academic, like science olympiad, and some were varied interests, like financial investing. And many of the things these kids were working on were service-related, and they had amazing ideas. As usual, I was so impressed by what our students are doing and are able to achieve, even as we're still dealing with the pandemic. I visited TJ Deer in eighth period yesterday and saw the same, a myriad of clubs, astronomy, stock investing, dance, biotechnology, oceanography, et cetera. We must all work together to be sure our students thrive and grow in this manner. I've also been really impressed by the community-building efforts of our schools over the past weeks. The McLean Celebration, including the elementary schools, parents and community members, was such a great example of this. A huge thank you to the PTA for putting this event together. Drainsville Elementary School hosted a Chalk for Peace event, and Lemon Road Elementary School hosted an environmental cleanup on September 11th. It was so nice to see families with little siblings, big siblings, all together, just meeting and greeting each other in a relaxing atmosphere and working on productive things together. Forestville Elementary had an outdoor event last Friday evening that sold out immediately after the first advertisement. They made some adjustments and added space, and it sold out again in minutes. Our families and our kids are hungry for this kind of interaction, and we must work hard to continue these efforts. I know our teachers and staff are working hard on community building for our students every day, and I so appreciate the work that they are doing. I met with our Drainsville PTA leaders yesterday and the Safe Community Coalition, and they are all working to build community in our schools. They have great ideas and have already started wonderful programming. Please join your PTA's, PTA's, PTA's and support their work. I also applaud community groups, like we talked about tonight, the League of Women Voters, that are working so hard to help us foster civically-minded students. And also happy to announce that the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers recently spearheaded a successful grant to work with three of our schools to help us develop additional outdoor learning spaces. We must continue to develop important partnerships like this to offer our students what they need. I know our road to opening schools with a Delta variant has not been perfect. We are still working on transportation issues, which is why our vote to support our bus drivers was so key today. We are still monitoring our procedures around pauses and quarantines. We've talked about that. And need to be aggressive about making sure we are doing the best possible. I'm dedicated to making sure we stay on top of this and keep our children safe and in school for the in-person school they deserve. Once again, I extend a plea for us to all put our disagreements aside, listen to one another as our speakers asked tonight, and to work together in our communities to do the best for our children. Congratulations to the Drainsville National Merit semifinalists, Herndon, Langley, McLean and TJ. And if you liked the music you heard at the beginning of the meeting tonight, you need to show up for some Saturday fun at Herndon High School, where they will be hosting the 24th Annual Virginia Showcase of Bands this Saturday from 10:00 to 8:30 p.m. It's a great opportunity to see 24 local high school marching bands perform in one place. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. I too wanted to congratulate our national merit finalists. We had 214 in Fairfax County, because we rock like that. So I just want to, I just want to say congratulations to our students who work so hard, who I know have a bright future ahead. I also want to thank the folks who participated in the Alfred Street Baptist Church Education and Justice Symposium, where I was able to participate in a panel on resolving inequities revealed by the pandemic. I know that this is an ongoing work, but I was very happy to be able to have that conversation and to take questions from the audience. I want to also point out that we just celebrated on September 17th Constitution Day, the day that we established our Constitution for a representative government and a document that is designed to help us to understand how to live together, even though we disagree. So I'm glad to be reminded of that today after this particularly exciting school board member. And despite our various different approaches to religion and faith and education and how we resolve what we are doing, I am grateful to remember that our forefathers knew that we would have disagreement and that we can work together. So I also want to acknowledge and thank my colleague, Ms. Tolan, for the resolution on voting. And remind you that the last day to register is October 9th. Finally, I just want to mention one thing, because I've noticed that oftentimes when we talk about what we want to do, we need more data or we need more this, and I understand we need that. But I also want us to weigh the cost of waiting. We've talked a lot about our bus drivers and how important that is, our employees. We've talked a lot about a lot of initiatives. And we will be talking about, you know, I have the John Lewis issue coming up. And I think about how we have talked about waiting and perhaps have not considered what messages we may be sending to our students or to our employees. And so in the process of how we watch the slow wheels sometimes of government, I'd like for us to think about what message we are sending. I know we all care. I know we all want data. But I hope that our students understand as we go forward how much we value them. So thank you. Have a good night.
Ms. McLachlan, followed by Mr. Frisch.
I'm going to refrain from trying to circle back on references on people who focus on data and wanting to make informed decisions, and trying to also be effective and expeditious in the decisions we make. It's really late, and I thought we were going to be trying to just stay positive in respecting the fact that there's 12 of us who all come at this work with, you know, diverse perspectives. So I will just say to our employees, and in particular, our principals, our staff, our teachers in the buildings, everyone who's serving kids every single day in the buildings, thank you for your incredible dedication from day one when our students came in the building. It is such a gift for them to be back with you and with one another. And I want to say, Dr. Braybrand, thank you to you and your team. I, I know that you and I have spirited conversations, and, you know, I appreciate that you and I always end up in a good place with one another, regardless if we see things differently. But I am sorry this evening that it's now 11:45. You and your team, especially the senior leadership that's sitting right here in the building, you've worked extremely hard, and I do hope that you will be able to recharge your batteries, not just over the weekend, but even tomorrow, because it's a marathon for us, and I know it's a marathon for all of you. So, and, and Ms. Amish, I do want you to know I heard you and appreciate what you were trying to say. I think we all have to very much remember that all 12 of us carry a big heart. This is hard work, and I don't doubt for a second that all 12 of us care. So thank you for what you were saying earlier.
Thank you. As was noted, September is Suicide Prevention Month. Tonight, I want to talk about Mary Griffith, who passed away last year just before the pandemic took hold. In 1983, Mary lost her gay son Bobby to suicide, an avoidable tragedy. Mary rejected her son. His death changed her heart. It led her to reconsider her views and become an outspoken advocate for families like hers. After tonight's disruption during public comment, I hope my colleagues will indulge me, I feel compelled to read some of Mary's words about her son and children like him. This is what she said during public comment at her local government, as her local government considered an LGBT rights ordinance. She said, "Because of my lack of knowledge, I became dependent upon people in the clergy. When the clergy condemns a homosexual, person to hell, and eternal damnation, we, the congregation, echo amen. I deeply regret my lack of knowledge concerning gay and lesbian people. Had I allowed myself to investigate what I now see as Bible bigotry and diabolical dehumanization slander against our fellow human beings, I would not be looking back with regret for having relinquished my ability to think and reason with other people, people I trust for truth and guidance in my life and in the life of our gay son. God did not heal or cure Bobby as he, our family and clergy, believed he should. It is obvious to us now why he did not. God has never been encumbered by his child's genetically-determined sexual orientation. God is pleased that Bobby was a kind and loving heart. In God's eyes, kindness and love are what life is all about. I did not know that each time we echoed amen to the eternal damnation, referring to Bobby as sick, perverted, and a danger to our children, that his spirit was broken until he could no longer rise above the injustice of it all. Bobby ended his life at age 20. It was not God's will that Bobby jump over the side of a freeway overpass into the path of an 18-wheel truck, killing him instantly. Bobby's death was the direct result of his parents' ignorance and fear of the word gay. An injustice has been done not only to Bobby, but to his family as well. God knows it isn't right that Bobby is not here with loved ones. Correct education about homosexuality, remember, this was written in 1980s, would have prevented this tragedy. There are no words to express the pain and emptiness remaining in the hearts of Bobby's family members, relatives and friends. We miss Bobby's kind and gentle ways, his fun-loving spirit, his laughter. Bobby's hopes and dreams should not have been taken from him, but they were. We can't have Bobby back. If we could, we would say to him, as we say to all gay and lesbian people around the world, these benevolent words, "Love yourself, accept yourself, forgive yourself, and be good to yourself, because without you, the rest of us are without a source of many wonderful things." There are children like Bobby sitting in our congregations. Unknown to you, they will be listening to your amens as they silently cry out to God in their hearts. Their cries will go unnoticed, for they cannot be heard above your amens. Your fear and ignorance of the word gay will soon silence their cries. Before you echo amen in your home or place of worship, think and remember, a child is listening. Thank you. Good night.
Ms. Darnak Kofax, followed by Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. We are all tonight saying some heartfelt words about how we need to bring people together, and we need to continue to make comments. We need to not make comments that divide. And yet, while we're saying that, sometimes we maybe inadvertently do that. So I want to thank all of the people that I spoke to this week, and there have been so many, because of the pauses, because of what's going on in our schools, because of the cases I have in our schools. I, I want to thank the parents who are patient with us. I want to thank the teachers who are working so hard, as well as the administrators in the building, as I spoke to earlier. We all have, we are all at the point where we are at a breaking point. And I spoke to Dr. Braybrand about it, and I spoke to other members of his leadership team about it. And I think what we have to do, we have to find ways to have differences of opinions, but realize we are all working toward a common goal. We are in a place where, I think, right now, a caring culture, we always said student success was the most important thing of our strategic plan, and right now, I want to elevate caring culture as something that needs to be first and foremost in all of the action that we take. And because there are so many differences of opinions, how we can get there, I ask us to have grace, be patient with each other, and listen before you make judgments on people. And I just say that collectively to the universe right now. It's not directed at anyone. But it has been a particularly tough week in Lee District, in Region 3, and I think we had a tough night here tonight. And I think, again, it was all in the name of a caring culture, but a caring culture requires listening and trust, and we need to work to build that amongst our constituency, meaning our, our parents, our teachers, and with each other. So I thank you all for indulging my comments, and have a good evening.
I want to thank Mr. Frisch for his beautiful statement and words. It's certainly difficult to follow that. But I do want to say it was very interesting tonight to hear a few times the prayer of St. Michael repeated. Because St. Michael became such an advocate for Jews that he actually occupies a place in our literature, which is really rare, because Jews don't believe in any sort of intermediaries between us and God. But he was so special that in our religion, he's seen not as a defender, but as a protector. And it's just a reminder to me why all of us are called to this dais. All different, clearly. All from different experiences, all from different backgrounds. And as Ms. McLachlan has said many times, we all bring something very different to these seats when we come here. But every single one of us, everybody on this dais, everybody over there in the peanut gallery, we are all here because we were called to protect and support kids. Any words to the contrary to that are not true. And though we disagree with one another frequently, there is not a person on this dais that I don't believe for a minute is not working their tail off every single day, because we are here, in the words of St. Michael, to protect and support. And I appreciate all of you. Good night.
Seizmohizer?
Well, I'll start with what she said. Right, ditto. Honestly, I will, I will say I respect all of you all at this dais and in the peanut gallery so very much for your passion, for your hearts, for your caring, for your work to try to make things better, even in the face of, I will say, a lot of unhappy people, whether they're in this room or out of this room. And we still work very hard to do what we all came to do, which is support kids. But I wanted to sort of talk a little bit more about something else. As a child of immigrants, one of the things I was most proud of growing up in this country was the fact that it was a democracy. And I could say what I wanted to about what I thought about the way our country should be run, about our government, about our society, about our schools. I could lead a walk out of my high school before you got in trouble for it. You could just express what you thought. And I, as I went to law school, as I taught constitutional law, the thing that I loved the most was the recognition that the bedrock of our country, of our democracy, of our constitution, is based on us talking to each other, of us listening to each other and building on our ideas. And that's And that's what I, when we are at our best up here and when we are best in that room, what we are doing is talking to each other, talking with each other, building on our ideas together with trust and faith that we are all here because we love our democracy and we love our country and we love our schools and we love our kids. And so what happened tonight in this room, it hurt my heart, because I believe firmly in the value of respectful discourse, whether we agree or disagree. And it hurt my heart, because respectful discourse can never be around denying somebody's humanity. That's not respectful discourse. We are all human, and we have to start with that premise. So what I'm trying to say tonight is that when we have statements and discourse that doesn't allow for other people's statements and discourse, and doesn't allow them to listen as well as to speak, and doesn't even allow for voices to be respectfully heard, whether it's because of our own perceptions, our own viewpoints, our own passions, or because of the way things are said, it hurts my heart, and it hurts our country, and it hurts our schools, and it hurts us. And worst of all, it hurts our kids. So I hope we can find a way, and I know we all work very hard at it, I know I fail, I know others fail, but I hope we can find a way to continue to have this respectful discourse with each other in a way that respects all of our humanity and all of our differences.
Thank you. Well, following that, I would like to just remind everyone that Ms. Kiesgahmara and I will actually be having a town hall on September 28 at 7:00 p.m., so I know we're looking forward to that. So I urge my constituents to come out. We really want to hear how the school year is going and your concerns. I also had a great visit this past week to Lee's Corner Elementary, and it was kind of an unusual visit, because I, I had the opportunity with Principal Damato to actually go through the lunch line and serve students. So it was fun. It was a lot of fun, and they got a total kick out of having him, serve him, and trying to push his chili beans to every child who refused to take them. But I also got to talk to the regional food and services director there and got to learn a little bit more about our amazing food and nutrition services and how hard they work, and I think they were really appreciative that they had the opportunity to kind of talk about their work a little bit. So I urge my colleagues, if you haven't done it, you definitely should, should try it. It was a lot of fun. Tomorrow, we have two homecoming parades and games, Chantilly and Westfield, and I won't be able to go to both, and I will say I'm going to have to choose my kid's school, as they will also be marching in the parade, and I'm really excited about that. And with that, I know it's late, and I think my parting thought for tonight is I want to remind the public that when we sit up here and we discuss and we talk and we have what I hope is usually respectful discourse, because we are all working towards a common goal. I definitely believe that of everybody on this board. But we are not just talking about other people's children most of the time. For many of us, we are talking about our own children. Decisions that happen here impact our kids. And I can guarantee you, there is nothing more important to anybody making these types of decisions than treating every kid the way we want our own children to be treated. And children are always watching. They are always watching adults, and they are learning. And we get to decide what we want to show our kids. So with that, thank you, everyone, and the meeting's adjourned. 12 o'clock.